The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Could we please do the roll call?
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Polito.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whitmer.
Yes.
Mayor DeGolia.
Yep. And the next item is a swearing in of Officer Bobby Magami. Is he chief?
Steve McCully, Chief of Police for the town of Atherton. So there's nothing more exciting for us than to be able to recruit and hire an officer on our team. And what's exciting about it is we have a lot of great things to offer. Atherton is a very great town, as most of you know. It's an outstanding place to be a police officer. We have a very supportive county administration. Town governance is very supportive of the police department. And there's nothing more rewarding than to add an additional person to the great team that we've built. And this actually brings us into full staffing, which we haven't been in the full staffing for at least five to 10 years. So it's a very exciting time for us. So Bobby, if you would come up.
I'm Bobby Magami. Local graduate of Penn High School and even the process of finishing pre in university. You also serve as a senior here. We're. Fired by East College in 2009. With extensive experience creating the best level of experience. I say your name.
Hi, Bobby Magami.
It's solemnly affirmed that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of faith, and that I will well and faithfully discharge duties of public. So I could repeat that. So congratulations.
That's so great. Yay, there you go. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations, Bobby.
So glad you're here. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment, which is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And let me give the public just a little overview about the agenda tonight. After public comment, we'll have the city manager's written report, which we have every month. And then we will have consent items, which will be voted on as a group. Following that, I am going to move what was item 17, which is a discussion of community feedback regarding the housing element updates. And the purpose of this is to allow the council to talk because the council cannot talk amongst ourselves on any item that is an agenda item before us as an action item for the town. So this is enabling us to talk. And when we get to that item, then there'll be an opportunity for public comment on every item. But the opportunity for public comment right now is for any item that is not on the agenda. And public comment tonight is limited to two minutes per person. And anyone is welcome to speak and we want to hear from you. If anybody has public comment on something not on the agenda, now is the time to let us know. Okay, I don't see any public comment. The next item is a report out from closed session, which our city attorney will provide.
Thank you, Mayor DeGolia. The council did meet in closed session today on two items. The performance evaluation of the city manager and myself. Prior to convening in closed session, there was a request for public comments. No one in the public wanted to comment on either of the items. The council reached a decision on the city manager's performance review. They gave him an excellent evaluation and particularly very pleased with the completion of the Civic Center project. They have made a decision on a $15,000 bonus and a 5% increase in annual compensation. This item will be formally presented to the council for review and approval as item number 18 tonight. The council also assessed the city attorney's performance and made the decision to increase the retainer from $15,000 a month to $17,000. Again, this item will be presented on the open session later this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written report before you as part of your packet this evening. Staffs here to answer any questions the council may have in the interest of time. That's all the report that I've got.
Any?
Just I just want to make a comment. For those in the audience, we were touring one of the residents today and was asking the chief of police some questions about the numbers of interactions that the police have on a daily or weekly or monthly basis. And I mentioned that every month in the city manager's report in this council packet is a very detailed analysis of what's gone on in the police department. So it's there for you to take a look at in your computer at ci atherton.ca.us and the agenda packet every month. So there's a lot of good information in the city manager's report there. It's like a public service announcement.
Right. Good. Any other comments? I have a couple. When I would discuss the city manager's report with him, we went over the specifics of the housing element timeline, which is included in his report. And just so the public is aware, we are in the 30-day review period for the housing element that had been published on the 10th of June in the newspaper. That has a 30-day period as reflected in his report. That will be discussed, the element, and it can be changed by the council at our July 20th meeting. That will be in a period after that 30-day period is ended, but during a 10-business-day period that has elapsed between that 30-day period and when the council can first send the completed and approved report to the state housing department. At that July 20th meeting, we will discuss that and we will, if we are able to make decisions on that, but those decisions won't become final until a special meeting, which will be held during the last week of July. The date hasn't been set yet. And I urge the city manager to set that date as soon as we can so that public members that wish to be there can plan for it. Because we all know that that point in July is a period where people are, you know, not always at home. And I want people to be able to plan for it if they wish to be there. But I just wanted to clarify that. The second thing I wanted to clarify is, as with every month, there are the summaries of the subcommittees that the city manager gives to all of us. And there were five subcommittees. The work has essentially been finished on. So I have terminated those subcommittees. The city manager will let everyone know that. But I just want to let you know that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, items seven through 10.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the meeting minutes, we're going to remove from the agenda, meeting minutes for the 18th and the 24th. We need to elaborate further on some of the council discussion for those minutes and we'll return them to you in July.
Very good. Okay. Does anyone wish to remove anything or have a comment on any consent item?
Just clarifying, we're removing item number eight from the consent.
Not entirely, just. Only the minutes of May 18th and 24th, the minutes of May 4th and June 1st will remain.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so no questions. Does anyone from the public wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Okay, seen none. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent calendar unanimously passes. Now, I am going to move item 17, which is discussion of community feedback regarding the housing element update. I know that there's a lot of people here, more than we've ever had in this room.
Very exciting.
Not more than we've ever had at a town council meeting, but it's a good number. And we have five public hearings tonight. So this is an extremely full agenda. But this is an important item. I want to give everyone who wants to speak to this item the two minutes that they wish to have. But I want to organize it in this manner. If someone has a comment that, you know, is urges the council to act for or against a certain item, I'm going to ask how many people in the room or on Zoom will support that? So people can show hands. You don't have to, but I'm going to ask for that. And the purpose that I'm going to do that is I'd prefer, if you have the same opinion that someone else has expressed that you share, yes, I shared that opinion, but you don't need to restate the whole statement. In order to save time, I'm trying to minimize how much time there is on spoken items. That'd be true with the council also, as long as that's approved by everybody.
It's fine.
Okay? Okay. So I think that probably the best way to handle this is to allow the council to have some discussion first.
You wanted me to go through some of the background first before?
Yeah, that would be great. Why don't you introduce the background?
Okay.
And then we can allow, we normally take public comment before the council speaks. But with this issue, I think it might help the public if you heard how the council feels on different items. And then that can help you with how you're going to frame your comments. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. After several public meetings and strategy sessions, the city council authorized the release of the current draft housing element for its 30-day comment period, which you mentioned earlier. While the element is out for public comment, it shouldn't be amended. Otherwise, we'd be required to renotice it and restart the clock for that public comment period, among other concerns, to include it's late already to the state. We have received a significant amount of public comment and all public comment received in writing via email or otherwise has been recorded as part of the public record for this process. Even comments that were received prior to the initiation of the 30-day comment period, they also become part of the public record. The public comment period will conclude on July 11th and the city council must consider public comments received over the course of 10 business days before making a recommendation on a draft housing element to submit to the state HCD. During that 30-day public comment period, there is tonight's agenda item as well as a special planning commission hearing on June 23rd, for which the public can also attend. Neither tonight's meeting nor the planning commission meeting are action item meetings. The items are for public comment only by the council, by the commission, and by the public. On July 20th, as the mayor indicated, the council will hold another public meeting to review public comments received. At that meeting, it's anticipated that staff may make some corrective recommendations to the draft element, as well as the council itself can make changes. One of the recommended changes that staff will recommend on July 20th will be the removal of 290 Poemus as a potential overlay zone candidate. Provided the council does not make material additions to the housing strategies, the council will hold another special meeting at the end of July to submit the draft element to the state. If there are material additions, the town will have to further extend the delay in submittal through another 30-day public comment period and 10-business-day review. Policy and land use strategies in the housing element to meet the state's mandate of 348 housing units at the four disparate income categories over the eight-year cycle are detailed in the housing element itself and include land use strategies that focus on accessory dwelling unit production, SB9 lot splits, development of vacant land, development of school and faculty housing at schools and bear gulch. In addition, the land use strategies include the use of a strategic overlay zone for identified properties that allow for higher density development, but don't require it, nor does it alter the underlying single-family zoning. These overlay zones would have higher and more defined land use controls than are provided under SB9 and even in the town's underlying single-family zoning, to the point of being similar to being very restrictive design review addressing height setbacks, parking, and other aesthetics. Those development standards have yet to be developed. None of the housing strategies included in the draft housing element are set in stone. They are all draft strategies designed as a plan to meet the state's mandate that have been set out for public review and comment. We anticipate that the review of the housing element will be an interactive process with the state before we eventually receive approval from the state of a compliant housing element. That process could take months or even a year or more to complete. It's very important that the town respond proactively and obtain a compliant housing element as jurisdictions face significant exposure to liability for noncompliant housing elements. Courts may impose fines of up to $100,000 per month. But worse, courts may also revoke a local government's land use and planning authority, relegating such control to the state without regard to local general plan guidance. The jurisdictions in Southern California are about 15 months ahead of us in the state's process for the sixth housing cycle. So we'll have some indication of the seriousness of the state with respect to imposing penalties and compliance measures. As of today, of the 124 jurisdictions in LA and Orange County, only eight have been found in compliance and the remainder continue in that interactive state review and approval process. At this time, while there may be some timing compliance measures imposed and other minor compliance requirements, to my knowledge, there has not yet been any monetary or land use penalties imposed. That said, this level of pressure and exhausting engagement by the state in the sixth cycle process is, to use an unfortunate word, unprecedented. The California Attorney General has already called out communities that attempt to flaunt the mandates. All public comment received via email, letter, or otherwise has been recorded and provided to the council. And I know that following council member comments, there are members of the public participating in the meeting tonight that would also like to comment. In the interest of time, as you've indicated, you might encourage speakers to consolidate comments via a spokesperson as well. And/or if they've submitted written comments, acknowledge that those have been received by the town and are already part of the public comment record. With that, Mr. Mayor, I return the floor to you.
Great. Okay. I think that we should start with the floor being open to members of the council for any comments or questions that you may have. I know that there's been a lot of public comment about particularly the overlay zoning on various properties within town. But you, anything that you wish to comment?
I just have a general comment statement, not specific to any property or anything. But I have to tell you, although this process has brought out a lot of frustration and irritation focused on the council for trying to somehow do something underhanded to the residents, that's absolutely not true at all. But I am so glad that we have this process so that you're all here to talk to us. And you have talked to us through your emails and your expression of viewpoints. And that's really, really important. Atherton is a tight community. And as we see, you are all our community. And I just want to let you know that there's no way that the council in this process has tried to do something behind your back, under the table, in order to blindside you. This process came through with, we had to get it filed. We were late filing it. We knew that there was a 30-day public review period. Once it was published, it would become public. And I know that there were letters that went out to residents in the neighboring communities. So all of that said, throughout the last year and a half, there have been public meetings, meetings with the planning commission joint meetings that were publicized and we talked about this and the procedure and at least four or five meetings just this year having to do with it. But because you are all so busy, it doesn't percolate up and penetrate your daily schedules unless something comes that triggers, oh, my gosh, something's going to happen in our neighborhood. But anyway, that's just my general overview about it. And, you know, I'm just really happy to see you all here tonight.
Other?
I'm happy to say.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure I'm quite so happy to see you all here. I personally saw comments from 37 people. I think Rick has seen comments from a lot more of those. I guess we'll be distributed so we can see the whole package.
I have a binder.
Yeah. Elizabeth has spent a fortune copying every single letter to distribute when necessary. Of the 37 that I received, I responded to 13. I responded to anybody that was rude or said something that I thought was inappropriate. And I was probably inappropriate in my response. And I also tried to respond to anybody that put a lot of time into this. At the top of that list are the Austons that live around the corner from that Poemus property. Quite frankly, they know more about the housing element, the process, the timeline, and their neighborhood than anybody up here on this dais. But after the Austons, the knowledge of what's going on kind of starts to drop off until we get down to the lowest level where people are confusing SB9 with the housing element and thinking this is all a vindictive plan by either council members or the city manager and so on. And it's not. We're between a rock and a hard place until, and I like to think this will happen, until there's a referendum passed by the voters that gets Sacramento out of the interfering with land use issues in individual jurisdictions. I, for one, think that needs to be done as soon as possible, but it's not going to be done for at least two years. And then it'll probably be tied up in the course for a while, if in fact it passes. So we've got to do something. And one point maybe where I disagree with my fellow council members, and maybe that's because I have no interest in ever doing this job again and they're going to seek reelection. But I think, I think we have a problem if we submit a plan to HCD that is clearly not a good faith plan, which is why we were scrambling to try and find options that would, that they would think might really happen in this eight-year period. And again, they don't, we're not responsible for making them happen, but we are responsible for making it, for providing the opportunity, the incentives to make these things happen. And it's not, it's not all about affordable housing. 348 houses, and I forget how many have to be affordable, but it's a tiny enough part of that. It's about providing opportunities for 348 living units. And from what we've seen so far, George circulated letters going back and forth between HCD and Southern California jurisdictions. These guys aren't, they're not going to put up with any baloney. We're going to get every, a number of you said, you need to push back. It ain't going to happen. There's a very, very limited ability to push back. They're going to tell us what we're going to do. They're going to decide whether our plan's good or not. And if it's not, they're going to deny it. And at some point, we're going to get into a situation where despite having a great city attorney and despite having some very, very legitimate claims about how difficult it's going to be to add 348 housing units in a town with 2,400 properties, all of them, essentially all of them already built up, we're going to, we're going to face some serious problems. So we've got to get this solved. And I just hope people will be patient. I know there's a, I'm kind of the poster boy for having to avoid the not in my backyard argument because one of the properties on this list, actually five of the properties on this list is a nine iron from my property. Used to be a pitching wedge, but I don't hit it that far. So, so we look, again, I appreciate the people that gave measured responses and there were a lot of them. I'm amazed at how polite most people were. We're between a rock and a hard place and we'll do the best we can to make this, make an unacceptable situation as acceptable as possible.
Yeah. You know, I like, my colleagues received a substantial number of emails and calls. You know, my numbers were approximately 80 inputs. Now, some of those were, some people I talked to or corresponded with two and three times. And, you know, they all had good reasons why not to do it near them and most of them cited high traffic. And anybody who doesn't live on a cul-de-sac knows we have high traffic everywhere. We have bicyclists and we have pedestrians everywhere. We have kids on bikes and pedestrians that are, you know, have safety issues walking on our streets everywhere. So we need to keep that in mind. I did take the opportunity to ask residents where they would put it. And besides, most of them saying anywhere but here, which I got a lot of that. I don't know, but anywhere. Many people said the northwest part of ECR. Well, that was one of the areas that I submitted earlier. Other people, everybody picked the Oakwood property. Several people talked about the Gilmore House and then possibly the Corp Yard. And so all those were ones that we had discussed. They might come back, but we had discussed those. But even those probably won't satisfy the state's requirements. And I explained to them that what we did when we were kind of looking between a rock and a hard place is that we, we looked at where are there open properties that are for sale or possibly might be for sale? And we selected some of those. And that's why some of the ones that we have there are identified. Most of the emails I received were very specific about 290 Poemus, which given the circumstances of the overall topology or topography there, as well as, you know, maybe a miscommunication between the staff and homeowner, et cetera. You know, that item, as you heard George say, that that one is deemed to be reconsidered and removed. And we tried to communicate that in some cases to some people. I've heard from a similar number of people about Valparaiso and Santiago commenting that the lot was too small, that there are concerns about traffic. Of course, I already commented on that. A random developer indicated that to do it properly and get it fit in there, they're not going to be able to build too much there. So perhaps, you know, in my case, I'm not so sure that that lot is appropriate. I also received a few emails on 170. You know, full disclosure, I toured the property the other day with, with one of the developers who was proposing to possibly do something there. And they, you know, they're proposing to build, you know, high-end homes. And, you know, and, you know, not all those affordable things and very well laid out in that area. Bookend by individual one-acre lots with single-family homes on the outside is what their original plan is, although the plan isn't done. So I thought that they had a decent plan. But at this point in time, you know, I'm not so sure that maybe that doesn't need a little bit more review and study from our. need a little bit more review and study from our from the council as well as from staff. You know, many emails, as Bob indicated, said, tell the staff that, you know, take a hike or tell the state to take a hike. And I think Bob was pretty clear that that's not going to happen. And, you know, every email I got, every call I got, I did return the calls. Some wrote back. And, you know, I appreciate that and I appreciate them when I asked them where they would do it if they were sitting in our seats. That they did at least take a shot at it. You know, but I think that there, as Bob pointed out, there was also people that didn't understand that we had gone to pretty great lengths to notify the public of what we've done. I've identified to people that, you know, we send postcards inviting them to a study session in the park where we were asking people kind of on a free form to mark up a map to say where they would like to have it. We on SB nine, we sent out leaflets informing people on what SB nine was and what they could do or what they couldn't do. And so I think that the town has done a pretty good job of trying to inform the public. And I know we all get a lot of junk mail and we all get a lot of junk emails. You know, I urge you all to get with Anthony Super, who is here. And make sure that you're on the email list for the email blast that goes out every Friday. It'll announce what we're doing and some things that are coming up. And when you see a mailer in the mail that comes from the town, you know, please at least take the time to look at it. Because many people said, oh, I never saw that. Well, I know that we sent one to every resident. So we need to, you know, as a team here, we all need to look for that. And if we have an opinion, we need to voice it then, not at the eleventh hour. Many people think that, oh, you know, we've got enough, we put together a plan that said we're going to be able to make it with just building ADUs. I don't think that's going to be the case. I get cited all the time about, oh, Menlo College is going to build some faculty housing. I believe that they want to. They need funding. If you want to see that happen, you can make a donation to them, but that's what they're going to be waiting for. They're on the end of building a three hundred bed student dormitory. So they're kind of tapped out at this point in time. And that had been on the books for well over ten years. It had been in our housing plan every year for, you know, quite a long time. And so, you know, we have to do a plan that is not only achievable, but also actionable. That's why, you know, we were excited about the situation on Oakwood. Where there's a seller that wants to develop the land. So we can go ahead and show the state that something's going to happen right away. But in the out years, we need to try and have something that appears to the state that we have a plan that we will be able to meet year on year. Because it's not just given the plan and then they go away and we'll see you in eight years. They're going to be monitoring this all the time. So I appreciate you listening to me. I appreciate everybody who sent me a letter. And, and, and listen to my commentary in the letter or on the phone when we, when we had the discussion. And I appreciate your, your input and your feedback. It was all positive. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll give my comments. And just to be clear, I'm, you all are hearing me. I'm not speaking specifically to you. I'm speaking to the council. I can't talk to other council members except one member other than when we're in public. So this is my opportunity to share with you what I think about this issue. And this is a really complex issue. First of all, the comments that George made in his introduction about the fact that Los Angeles County and Orange County are fifteen point five months ahead of us. And eight months out of compliance. Eight months ago was their due date. Where our due date is January thirty first. So we get to watch what happens to them, what HCD does and how serious the threatened consequences are. George stated all of that. I'm not saying anything new. I just want to emphasize it because I think it's really important. I think it's the only good news in this whole deal. Now, it might be there's some good news if we do the zoning overlay and there's really good townhomes built that meet some resident needs. Because I know from the communications I've had from residents that there's a good number of residents that would like to stay in Atherton and downsize and not have to take responsibility for landscaping. Whether the design or the location that we're targeting with in this strategy meets those needs is uncertain. But I know from the communications I've got that there is not a small number of people that have interest. In fact, if I were to categorize people for various things, by far the largest number of people object to the overlay on specific parcels, particularly the three parcels that were approved at the special meeting. And I'll come back to that. But I'd, I think that there are slightly more residents that have told me they're interested in looking at this than those that want to just totally fight the state mandates. And I thought, Bob, your comments on the state mandates were very good. I completely agree with your assessment. I just want to add to it. I have sort of three principles in this whole thing for me. Number one, I don't want to be a target. I don't think anyone in Atherton wants to be a target. We don't want the attention that would be paid to us from private or public advocates if we failed to seriously try to enforce the mandates that we've been given. And that includes SB nine. And SB nine and the housing element, as Bob said, are quite different. But we had a very, I believe, intelligent response to SB nine, which is a hundred percent compliance with it. And yet protection of as much of the setbacks and the other local control items that we can have. And yet a hundred percent allow not interfering with the law. And we haven't. And I don't think we should interfere with the housing element. And I think we can make it work for us at least this time. I'm more worried about next time. And, and that's part of the reason why I think that it's really important that there be some initiative or some other kind of action that that informs Sacramento about how much people feel local control is important. But this time, if we end up being a target, you can see it started to happen to Woodside. There's nothing the advocates would like more than to go after Atherton. So I, the intelligent response is to make sure we're not a target. That's my number one principle. My number two principle is the whole concept of overlay zoning is a new concept for us. We've never approved that level of multifamily housing. We have multifamily housing with ADUs on a single property. But this is a new thing. And we don't know what all the impacts are going to be. So we have to be really, really careful with this. And we have to go really slow. And, and that means inform people as much as we can, which I know all of us are committed to doing. I think we made a mistake with May twenty fourth. I felt good about the decisions that we made on our meeting on May eighteenth. Though that reduced the density on some of the properties and it took those properties on Marsh Road off the list. So I think that staff felt they didn't have as much ammunition to negotiate with HCD. But I felt good about what we did on the eighteenth. And I felt like on the twenty fourth, we added three properties and we increased some density. But, and, and for the six properties that we had up to then, they'd been discussed for six months. So the public had lots and lots of opportunity to react. When those three properties came up on May twenty fourth, both, we weren't that informed. We hadn't really gone and looked at them and the public wasn't informed. So I think that personally, I think that was a mistake. I, I would have liked to have vetted these things more than we allowed to happen. I will say, and I've received more emails than you have. I probably have received over a hundred and I think I have responded to every single one, including I, I really don't think there were many insults. I think I got one insult. But for, in general, residents are concerned. They don't want change that's going to adversely impact their quality of life. And I completely understand it. I feel that way too. I live quite close to one seventy Atherton Avenue. I, I can see positives and negatives on this thing. It doesn't comply with the criteria that we laid out when we first started discussing this overlay zoning. But what I didn't know is I didn't know anything about the impact of the hill on Poehemus to the Poehemus property until I went and looked at it. And when I looked at it and there's a sign there that says it's a blind hill, it's a hundred percent obvious. I, I brought up how I felt like the Marsh Road properties weren't ripe because of the congestion that was just insurmountable. I think the same level of passion about Poehemus, the only exit, if you were to do townhomes on that property would be on Poehemus and it would be dangerous because of the hill. Now, that, that's a contentful issue. But the other contentful issue that's really important in any of this overlay zoning is whether there's homeowner and potentially developer support. We saw that at twenty two Oakwood. We know now that absolutely doesn't exist at Poehemus. And I, and I've been told it doesn't exist on ninety seven Santiago. So I think that, that I a hundred percent support removing Poehemus from the list. And I'm certain we'll do that on July twentieth. And, well, I think we should remove Santiago from the list. We, we don't have any indication of any interest. And I've been told that the new owner there isn't interested, so. I think that one seventy Atherton Avenue is very complex because there is property owner and potentially developer interest in doing something there. If we do that, George mentioned, and this is really for the public, because I think the council knows this, that with this zoning overlay, we get a lot of control about what the setbacks are, about how the structure of the thing occurs. We can protect neighboring properties and we can, we can, we can manage a whole series of things about the development that we can't do with SB nine. With SB nine, everybody has a right to split every single property that exists in the state of California in half. And there's nothing that local communities can do about it. We've, and, and the purpose of that is to allow for duplexes, which have a minimum of eight hundred square feet. And we're allowing for that. So if anyone wants to build eight hundred square feet on an Atherton property, they're going to be able to do it. And they could build more. With, with the state mandated setbacks. That's right. So I think the, what's really important going forward is that we all as a community discuss this zoning issue and this increased density. Because it really is going to change. I don't know how much is going to change Atherton, but it's a potential big change. And we have to be careful because there's going to be unintended consequences. We have to think through infrastructure with sewer, all kinds of things that, you know, could have impacts. And I'm very, very concerned about it.
Just add what, to what Rick said. Besides the design control, because we want nice stuff in this town. So besides the design control, we can mediate as a part of the whole process, some of these issues that, like he mentioned on the hillside property on Poehemus. Whether it's with stop signs, crosswalks, bike lanes, there's a lot of things we can do to actually might, in some cases, make, make a safer place than it was to begin with. I think that's important to recognize. I personally still think that property has potential to be a fabulous kind of, I mean, maybe the density's not right. Maybe it should be a lower density. But have some spectacular, attractive, secure townhomes there and take care of those other issues. That's me. And I'm not running for reelection, so.
The one, one point I wanted to address is that one of the comments that I was getting is that they felt that it was kind of arbitrary. We were arbitrary picking properties and just making those the overlay. And I wanted to share a little bit that we did actually think through this. We were given an impossible task. How do we get X number of low income housing, middle, all within a very short period of time in a high income properties? It was an impossible task and nobody wants density near them. So we started first by addressing the thought process of, well, what kind of low income housing would be appropriate that we would want? And we came up with teacher housing, housing for fire, for emergency and, and things like that. So very first, we went after the places where we had schools, where we could try to make, encourage them to do housing in those areas. There's also Bear Gulch where Cal Water has land. It would be ideal if we could lobby to get some property there and get them, get some funding for wildfire, housing for wildfire defense. Because there's money and that's right on the edge of the fire zone. So all of those kinds of things we should explore and try to lobby to make them happen. The next thing we did was look at the city and say, well, how will we do this? And for me, one of the obvious things is since nobody wants it, let's look at the places where there's already density. So houses that are immediately adjacent to density, they're already living in density. So as opposed to going into the middle of the town, let's, let's find places that are, so set a set of principles. And one would be next to density. The second would be near Thoroughfare or Main intersection to address some of the traffic stuff. So even when you look at that, you then had to go back and look, physically look at the different locations. And that's how we ended up with some of the places we have. And some fell off. And I still think some should be reconsidered in the future at the next round where we consider this. For example, some on El Camino, which is already dense and already high populated. So there was a thought process. It wasn't some people who entered in this very late and saw individual properties being proposed said, wow, what are you talking about? But we did go through a whole process and there are other things on the table as well.
If I can just add to Diana before the vice mayor speaks. Because Diane, I spent a couple of days driving around and exercising those principles that she spoke of. And we identified a lot of properties right along El Camino that we brought back to council and the planning staff. And they said, well, the plan, the problem that we were faced with there was that most of those properties were smaller lots. And if they're a smaller lot, a developer would have to assemble a few of those smaller lots. And the probability of HCD kind of believing that that would convert into any kind of significant housing development over the next eight years. Because assembling, you know, because these people don't have to sell. I mean, they want to live in their house until they die practically. And, but if they do, then maybe that house next door to them doesn't want to sell. But maybe the house next door to that. And so you get this, you know, little picket fence thing going. So that was taken off the table. And the reason, I just say, the reason that we held that meeting on the twenty fourth, which I think in hindsight, because we hadn't vetted those two properties. And we had talked about the one on Valparaiso, but it was because they kind of came to us late in the game. We had known about them previously. So, and we had been told, you know, that we had owner support in that way. I mean, we would not have done it any other way. I mean, we didn't just arbitrarily say, oh yeah, that one we're going to pick. But we had communication from both owners. And we realize now that the Poehemus is taking it off the table. And that's fine. That's an owner's prerogative. And we don't want to, you know, push that forward if there's no desire by the owner to actually develop it that way. So that was why we did the twenty fourth. And I understand in hindsight, we don't really feel good about it. Because nobody, I mean, everybody felt blindsided about that. But here we are. And so asking people, well, where do you think we should? And so we had lots of And so we had lots of comments. Well, how about along El Camino where that nail salon and hair salon, um zinc uh hair salon. Uh and um liquor store is, well, that's Menlo Park. That's not Atherton. It kind of looks like it should be in Atherton because it's right across the street from. Um Alejandra, but that's all Menlo Park. So there's, you know. We don't really have a lot of choices. So and we've looked at the courtyard. And we looked at what maybe four or six potential um little townhomes there. The the density isn't there.
Okay, so but before Bill speaks, I I just want to let everybody know, before Elizabeth spoke, the train went by. And when we were in that room, if the train went by, everybody had to be quiet because you couldn't hear anybody talk.
This is a great building. So uh if anybody wants to sit, there's a a whole row right in the first row. Don't be shy. Come on, Paul. You can come sit.
One one last thing I I'd like to, and I did put this in several of my notes uh and and when I. Uh went out and I toured uh with the Austins, the Pohemus area, including Fletcher. A key thing, if you if you're going to contact your state representatives. And make a comment at some some case, I think that. One of the key things that's missing from all this, which has been mentioned, but I just want to, you know, underline it, so to speak. We're in a drought. We have water restrictions, but we're going to build a ton of new housing here in California. I guess those people don't drink, take showers or flush the toilet. Speaking of flushing the toilet, many of the sewer lines are too small to take another. Large number of homes. So all this stuff really. You think we rushed into it. I think the whole thing personally has been somewhat rushed into. Because there's a substantial amount of infrastructure issues that still need to be addressed. You add a lot more homes throughout the region. We have rolling blackouts. I guess we'll have more rolling blackouts on hot days. Because the the grid doesn't currently support enough. It's getting better, but it doesn't do all that. So I think, you know. If you're objecting to something to any of our state representatives. Then, you know, some logic and some, you know, additional information might be good and. Maybe it'll end up with some funding for fixing those things before we push push everything through the system. So, okay, appreciate you guys all being here and look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you. So I'm going to now take public comment on this and uh that doesn't mean that all of you can't comment. We may have uh an ability to not to respond. You can't respond to any public comment, but if you have other thoughts, we'll have a minute to share those at the end. Um it when when we were in the old council chambers, we used to have little cards that would people would fill out. If they wanted to give public comment. We haven't implemented that yet. Uh so uh if you wish to give public comment, please come up and um Anthony will watch the two minutes to let you know. If you would just, if you would give your name and your address, that would help us a lot.
And speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, where where would you put it? Look at San Carlos, Belmont, Redwood City, Menlo Park. Everybody's going. Down El Camino or the railroad tracks. If you put eight, ten, twenty units of the acre. Uh zoning on uh El Camino, I guarantee you those people that are reluctant to sell. Most of them will be happy to sell at the price they would pay. Um getting back to what the town is doing, I don't think we need a density overlay. I think that uh. Between the ADUs, SB nine, uh the schools, various other things, obviously with SB nine and and the ADUs. The town can either double or even triple the population of houses that are in existence. I think that we should be very careful about throwing too much on the table with ninety five percent of uh LA County and Orange County. Not having uh been approved and they haven't gone to jail. They haven't thrown the books at them. They haven't done it. The other thing I would ask is that Palo Alto, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Ross, Tiburon, Danville, Dublin. All have protested their reading their numbers and they are now in mediation on that. Why didn't Atherton do that? So those are my comments.
What's the beep? Thank you, Jim Anthony. Okay, we have a beep for two minutes. Okay, I'll let people know when it's two minutes. Please.
Hi, my name is Jeff Morris. I live at fifty five Elena. I've lived in Atherton for sixty seven years. I just learned about the zoning overlay concept yesterday. And despite all the public notice, I never got anything. I called a friend of mine who lives next to the Fisher's property. He never got a thing. Call him today. Never got a thing. So not all of us were reading our mail or reading our emails or whatever. We just learned about this. Um zoning overlay is a bad concept for one seventy Atherton Avenue. I'm here to voice opposition to the PPP project for the property at one seventy. The concept of thirty two residences on four acres, which is eight units per acre. Plus four additional residences on two two acre sites for total thirty six residences is a grave mistake that Atherton will regret forever. I'm surprised that the town council voted so quickly without giving all the residents the proper notification. I've done a lot of real estate development in the area. And there are definitely requirements for notifying neighbors. PPG could have a great project if it built eight residents on one acres parcels. With ADU, so it'd be a total of sixteen instead of thirty six. But it would would comply then with the eighteen percent FAR rules, which everybody in this room has to comply with it. The zoning code is eighteen percent FAR. I have no idea what their zone what their FAR will be, but it's probably above sixty to eighty percent. I don't know what the best practices are. Uh Jerry mentioned other cities. I don't know what they're doing. Uh but I think that we should really look and take a look and see what other cities are doing. Um I'm not here to complain without offering a solution. I will personally volunteer to work on any committee you want. I bet you there's a lot of people in this room who do the same thing to look at every possible location in town. To come up with a plan that complies with the state requirements. The number of ADUs, maybe we increase it from thirty five, whether it's thirty six, forty, whatever. Menlo School, Sacred Heart, um the train station parking lot. Holbrook Palmer, I'm very familiar with the deed. I built the Little League field. Uh there's room to build there. Um there's, we've got to find other options which are less impactful to the town and don't destroy the character. We should stick with one acre minimums. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want Anthony to continue to note?
I think that's fine.
All right, um thank you all for being doing what you do. I'm Alan Austin. Um my wife, Marianne, and I live at Two Orchard Hills. On the corner of Pohemus and Orchard Hills. We've lived there for more than thirty years. I was planning to go on and on about the folly of developing that Pohemus property, but since it seems to be off the table, I won't. Worry with that. But I would like to step back uh and make a broader point, which others have alluded to as well. The reason that we're kind of in this jam right now is because uh eight years ago. Uh the council cobbled together a solution and then kicked the can down the road and. Uh it looks like probably you're going to succeed in cobbling together a solution now and again kicking the can down the road. But I don't think we should count on the law being changed. Maybe it will be changed. I. I'd bet personally that if it does change, it'll probably get worse rather than better. But uh I think it's not too soon right now to start planning ahead. And and do some serious urban planning about what Atherton ought to do to increase density. Uh as we are going to be required to do over the next ten, twenty, thirty years without destroying the character of the community. And 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 not putting future councils in the business of looking around for empty lots that are for sale and trying to figure out where where they can uh put some townhouses. I I'm not sure what the answer is. I I think I'll echo comments been made. Other communities up and down the peninsula are densifying the El Camino. Uh corridor, the rail corridor. Clearly doing it one little plot at a time isn't going to work. Uh this is going to require an amendment to the general plan. It's going to require working with developers to figure out. Spots along El Camino that are suitable uh for development. And it's not townhouses, it's apartment buildings and condominiums. It's it's not eight units an acre. Forty units an acre, but that's what you need to do. And if and if we could succeed in doing that, Ricky said you're very worried about the next time. I am too. I think if you if this can be done successfully, then uh we can. Meet the density requirements that we're going to have without destroying the character of the neighborhoods. And the community of Atherton that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, please.
We have to wait.
I'm Laurie Shepherd. I live at three ninety eight Walsh Road. Lived there for quite a long time. I think I agree with all the points that have already been made, so I'll just add a few, which is just as a point of reference. When I got a call on this that there was talk about going to high density development in the heart of town. I told my friend, of course there's not. That can't possibly be. Um because it goes against kind of every basic land planning principle that. Many of us learned long ago. And so I think uh to Jerry's point. Basic land planning for high density needs to be concentrated along transportation corridors. El Camino Real, it's the train. That, to Alan's point, is correct. That's where it needs to be focused. You cannot plop that down in the middle of Atherton Avenue, for goodness sakes. I mean, that. It's foolhardy. And just FYI, on the town's website, and I quote. It's important to note that no changes to any land uses that's in bold and underlined are being proposed as a part of the update. That's obviously not the case. So I think a lot of people are under a misconception in terms of what this whole process is going on. And I would urge you to take a look at that. I have a few questions that I would love to hear back on, which is. Has the town, and again, it's to many people's point, have we engaged outside council? What kind of out? Outside council are we receiving um on this issue that go that goes beyond our um city attorney? I'm I'm advised that there are three, at least three dozen jurisdictions in the state of California who are fighting this very hard. And have a number of challenges that they're pursuing. To your point, uh mayor, it's um. I'd love to see what happens in Southern California, but they have pushed back very, very hard, starting with the.
Ma'am, I hate to be in the position to interrupt you, but the two minutes are up. With the council's pleasure.
The allocation, but I would love to hear back what we are doing. I I think just in closing. What we're asking is don't do, don't do what's easiest. Do in the end what's going to be best for our community.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, Jim.
Name's Jim Assi, Seven Lloyd Drive, Atherton. I've lived in Atherton for sixty years. I live in Atherton's poverty pocket, Lloyd and Park, right over here. Houses in our area just sold for over six million dollars. The three speakers you just addressed picked my neighborhood and protected their neighborhoods. As I had addressed this council early, it appears to be totally discriminatory and the city could once again. Be sued for redlining neighborhoods and we need to break. If we're going to do this, everybody gets hurt, including my neighborhood. And once again, I'm from the poverty pocket. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, hi, my name is Steve Smith. My wife and I live at three two three Fletcher Drive. We've been here about six years. I'm just here to reinforce the request for a general land use plan and long term view for the city. Our prior experience for thirty years before that was in Palo Alto. It was a constant discussion, but we knew the zones. We knew the zoning. We knew what overlays were and we knew what they were for and where they went. And I think that if we structure ourselves now for a long term plan, we'll actually be by having a proactive plan in the best shape. To continue to meet the needs for the long term. And we'll have the right density in a place we have a vision for, like the Grand. Boulevard for El Camino and appropriate but increased density in other places. So we'd like to see that plan. You talked before about asking for a show of hands. I would love to see a show of hands of how many people here. Would like to see a general plan structured and reviewed with the residents.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Other public comment? Anybody else? If there's any public comment online, let me know.
I've been emailing and checking and no, I think.
Because I I I don't see that on my screen.
Hi, my my name is Nahid Ali Miazzi and I'm the resident directly across from two ninety Pohemus. Uh three oh one Fletcher Drive on the corner of Alameda and Fletcher. My concern is residents is walking. Um I've walked down down Atherton Avenue off of Fletcher, coming back on Pohemus. Uh coming down that hill that was described. And I do believe that it is very, very dangerous. I do believe that you cannot see. I've nearly gotten hit twice. I plan on taking my grandson there for walks. Because that is the nearest area and I'm very scared. I'm very scared of the traffic and also the safety. And finally, I'm concerned about the crime. The crime has increased substantially in Atherton. I was driving down the street and got pulled over by a police officer thinking, why are you in the neighborhood? I do believe that if you do put many homes in that block, that that it will affect the crime rate in the area. And I'm concerned about that, parking outside of my house, being able to come in and out at night. So that is going to affect my family and I believe the safety of the residents is on Fletcher and Pohemus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Green. I live at One Berry Lane, which is right across from the Atherton. Uh Avenue House that we're discussing. Uh I have three young kids, a six, eight and ten year old. Berry Lane is already a nightmare with cars ripping through there. Um it's supposed to be the designated bike lane. I don't let my kids walk to school. They go to school two blocks away and I can't have them walk to school. Because there's already so many cars using that as a throughway. If we add more space or more housing, it's it's going to cause traffic on Atherton Avenue. El Camino at Alameda, which we all know is backed up um during rush hour. Uh secondly, um. I would like to talk to my fellow residents. I'd be interested in creating a park at one seventy uh Atherton Avenue. And if anybody's interested in looking into that and buying the buying the four acres in the middle to uh get a. Drought resistant native plant and tree park. I think that would be wonderful for the community. So uh please talk to me if you're interested. Thanks.
Other public comment? Okay, I don't see any other public comment in the room. Is there any online?
There's none.
Okay, does anyone in the council wish to make a further comment? Go ahead.
So thank you, guys. You know, great ideas, really, super ideas. Um I agree that uh looking forward. For our next housing element is really important. I remember when I first got on council back in two thousand eight. Actually, I was on General General Plan Committee in two thousand six. I remember when I first got on council back in 2008, actually I was on General Plan Committee in 2006. And I think we were going through the housing element at that time. And the mayor at the time was Mayor Jim Janz. Some of you may have known him. He was a public servant for a long time. He, the question was positive, but why don't we annex part of Fair Oaks or Seamateo County? Just north of, just north of the Atherton border, Redwood City. You know, like a neighborhood there so that we can do development, high density. And I don't know if any of you here kind of remember that at all. But, you know, we looked at it as a council and as the city staff and the planners. And, you know, it just didn't pencil out because of, you know, the tax base and how much, at the time, it would have cost the town too much to do that. But those are kind of out-of-the-box thinking things that we may have to consider. Because Atherton is a finite geographical place and we don't really have a lot of open space. Even the Cal water space, there's not that much up there. They said maybe only four or six houses could be built up there. So, you know, I like the park idea for the Atherton Avenue property. And years ago, another resident and I wrote a letter to the owner. And we requested that they bequeath it to the town as part, because it's in a philanthropic trust right now. And to give it to the town, because they really don't need it and they weren't living there all the time. And it is almost like just a park. So that would be really, really great. It wouldn't help us with our housing element at this point, but things like that. So, I don't know, maybe the Polhemus property could be turned into a lovely park. We loved it when it was a vineyard, but it's kind of a dry piece of ground right now. But vineyards take a lot of water. Anyway, so that was my comment about how do we find another area outside of Atherton? To annex to maybe build these apartments in high densities.
Well, I'll say, I think that we recently had a general plan review, right? Two years ago, I think. And. But the issue is, how do we think ahead? How do we get ahead of this issue? And this issue isn't going away. And, yes, we can all work to try to see there be some legal change or some initiative. But we don't know that that's going to happen. What we do know is that there's going to continue to be pressure. And I'd rather be ahead of this than behind it. So I think that is a really good thing for us to look at in the future.
One of the residents proposed, one of the residents proposed making a citizen committee. Is that something we could do?
Well, usually in doing, we could do a general plan committee. But let's not respond to that specific request. Let's put it on the agenda to talk about.
Okay.
At an upcoming meeting. I think that's the right way to, we got a lot on this calendar for tonight and we've been into it for a little over now.
So I just wanted to ask city staff one question. Some residents were talking about, you know, our general plan says XYZ. And here we are saying, no, we're not going to follow that because we're trying to appease the state mandate. So does the state mandate trump our general plan and makes all those promises we say in our general plan that we want to have for our town? If it conflicts with what they are requiring us to do?
The city attorney could probably comment further. I don't think it trumps the general plan. But in order, if in order to comply with the regional housing needs allocation, we end up changing our underlying zoning. We would have to then change the narrative within the general plans, land use element and others.
We'd be forced to. Mona? She's muted.
Muted.
Mona, you're muted.
She knows it.
I think Anthony's muted her.
There we go. Okay, thank you. The city manager is correct. We have two years to bring our zoning code into conformance. So state law actually takes into consideration decisions that are made that then put your, for example, zoning code out of compliance with general plan. You then have two years to remedy that situation.
Great. So just to clarify what she said, for those that didn't get the language. We have until January 31st to have our housing element approved by the state housing authority. Once it's approved, you then have two years to implement whatever changes you're proposing in your strategy. So that's when the zoning changes would happen. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. So first off, I want to thank everybody for their input. It was all great input. You know, just kind of to summarize what we had said and what the city manager indicated before. You know, we've given our, we've opined on what we think about the three pieces of property. And, you know, 290, city manager, you know, indicated that that's going to be removed. I think up here on the dais, we talked about removing or not supporting Santiago. And 170, not including it, but put it out for further review later on. Some of the things that were discussed here, a park, if the foundation can get to a park, that's fine. But we'll leave that for now. But, so I think that many of the things that, in addition to the plan and issues with regards to the general plan and things like that that have come up. I think that what most of you've come by to discuss were specific pieces of property. And I think that the council has said, we've heard you. And we've come and indicated that, you know, our support for most of your input. So that's what the democratic process is all about. Of course, if we get rejected, we'll be back here again.
Okay. We're likely to get rejected in the first go around.
Absolutely.
So anyway, so thank you.
What was it, 118 of 125 in Southern California got rejected? We'll probably be rejected.
Yeah.
But we're in the process.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that good? Well, then, thank you, everyone who came. Don't feel like you need to stay to listen to the public hearing.
Please stay. You don't want to stay?
Our next item is a public hearing regarding declaration of exemption of government code 4902.
Item number 11.
Item number 11.
Okay, thank you.
We give the room a second to clear.
Why don't we take a minute?
All right, item 11, eh?
Now, wait until you're.
See out there in the scum?
Scuffle, you meant?
Yeah, he's talking to them. Okay, let's go ahead. We can go ahead.
We'll send the sergeant of arms.
Who's presenting item 11? Okay, Robert.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you, we have the consideration of the vacation of a portion of Madrone Road, approximately 165 feet. The street was originally accepted with its original subdivision back in 1907. So it's an older road and it allowed for potential extension with a future subdivision through Lindenwood. In 1937, with the Lindenwood subdivision, basically that potential was terminated. So the right-of-way for Madrone Road basically tees into the rear of properties on Catalpa. Back in 1989, the property owner at 71 De Bell, which backs up on Madrone, had requested the consideration of the vacation of that portion of Madrone Road. It was not processed at that time. Recently, in November of 2021, the property owner approached the town for consideration of the vacation of that piece of property. And so in essence, it's through number one Madrone and 71 De Bell. It borders those two properties. Currently, that piece of, that area that we are talking about vacating is fenced off. So it's not accessible by the public. One side, as you'll see in the pictures in the attachment, is actually the gate entry to number one Madrone. The other side is just fenced off as backyard property for 71 De Bell. And so there isn't really a transportation need for the town for that piece of road. We're not going to extend it. We don't need to maintain it. It's in essence, just a piece of property that should be returned to the underlying property owners. So the item was brought forward to the Transportation Committee for consideration. They didn't see any transportation need for the piece of property and didn't object to the vacation. So what we're asking is to conduct a public hearing regarding it. But there's also, typically these items would go before the Planning Commission. But with such a minor disposition, the council can waive that requirement by resolution. So that's the first item on the agenda. The second part is conducting the public hearing for the vacation.
So the first item on the agenda is.
I'm sorry, the first part of the item is to adopt a resolution allowing us not to go to the Planning Commission.
And then the second is to open the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve that this not go to the planning?
We actually have to take public comment first.
Oh, thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion.
I'd like to move the council here, this public hearing and make a decision at that time. And waive going to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
So you're making two motions at the same time? So essentially, you said.
Let's do them one at a time. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. I'm formally opening the public hearing regarding the issue of the easement that addresses one Madrone and 71 De Bell. We've heard the presentation from the staff. Are there any questions from the council? Yes.
Has somebody been paying the property taxes on this piece of land? Who's been, you know?
It's an easement.
The easement, well.
It's, this piece of property is part of the road. So as it gets added to the properties, they'll be paying property taxes for the respective.
So as Atherton's been paying because it was part of the road?
There are no, the town doesn't pay property taxes for the road.
Right, okay. Right, of course. Okay, but as it gets assembled into the new property owner, they will then.
Be paid as part of their property taxes.
Right.
They've been paying the taxes. It's no different than an easement for your telephone lines or whatever, right?
Okay. No, I don't think so.
I was going to say, it does add that nominal square footage to the property because it will be within their property bounds.
So it's not part of their property right now? That doesn't strike me as an easement, then.
It's the, I'm going to say, it's the roadway property. They've been using it. It's just not usable.
Is this, I guess the question is, is this, the property boundaries go all the way to the end? But then there's a dedicated right-of-way easement on top of that for the town? Is that the situation?
The properties of but the road.
Okay, so is there. So who owns the road? The road's abandoned.
Once the road, once the road is abandoned, it goes to the respective property owners on either side.
So will they get a property? I'm curious, are they going to get a property tax increase?
Differ that legal, that question probably to Mona, maybe she can.
Yes, they will get, it becomes developable space for them, so yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Make sure we prove that. Get the tax dollars.
So move to approve.
Second.
So we have to open the public hearing on this and do a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, I have opened the public hearing. And since it's a public hearing, we need to do a roll call vote? Is that correct?
Yes, please. But you had a motion and a second, so.
So I have a motion and a second for a resolution of the council to declare that the provisions of California Government Code 65402 shall not apply to the minor street-related acquisitions and dispositions that have been described by staff. Louis and Polito.
I think that's the actual Planning Commission thing, right?
The second motion for which is the subject of a public hearing is the resolution supporting the vacation of the street use of a portion of the Madrone Road. Which is the next one.
Oh, sorry, you're right. I read the first resolution.
Right.
Wrong resolution, okay. It's a resolution vacating a portion of the Madrone Road and reserving an easement for existing public utilities on that property. Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Polito?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whitmer?
Aye.
And Mayor DeGolia?
Aye. Okay, we're moving on to item number 12, which is an appeal of a planning commission decision to deny a variance to allow for a fence to exceed six feet in height and to allow for a retaining wall to be located less than five feet from the property line at 25 Isabella.
Stephanie, she's on Zoom.
No, Stephanie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi, hello, Stephanie Davis, Principal Planner. Anthony, are you able to share the presentation that I emailed earlier? Or would you like me to share my screen?
If you could share it, that would be more convenient right now.
Okay. Okay. Is my screen visible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great, thank you. So good evening, council. Tonight you are being asked to consider an appeal request of a planning commission decision which denied a variance application request at 25 Isabella by a 5-0 vote that would have allowed for considerate construction of an as-built fence up to a height of eight feet. As well as for a retaining wall that situated less than five feet from a property line. So as noted, the fence or wall, that is the subject of tonight, has already been constructed along the shared property line between 15 and 25 Isabella. The fence consists of a two-foot retaining wall constructed on the shared property line with an additional six-foot fence built on top of it. The unit's constructed of concrete and it's finished with stucco. This results in an approximate eight-foot tall wall at its highest point. For orientation, there's two photos here up on the screen. The one on the left is the view of the wall from the 25 Isabella property. Whereas the photo on the right is a view of the fence wall from 15 Isabella side. So just a bit of background on this project. In 2016, a permit was issued for demolition of the then-existing home at 25 Isabella. And construction of a new main residence and other site improvements. At that time, and historically prior to any improvements, the properties at 15 and 25 Isabella have the same topographic elevation or effectively at the same grade level as each other, give or take approximately two inches. After the construction at 25 Isabella for the main residence and other site improvements began, was noted by town staff that at some point in 2019, the entire property at 25 Isabella was regraded. Resulting in an approximate two-foot overall elevation grade range increase at the property at 25 Isabella. A permit from the town was not issued for this work. In May 2020, a formal complaint was filed with the town related to the as-built fence. related to the as-built fence, concerned that it exceeded the town's otherwise allowable six-foot maximum fence height in accordance with the Atherton Municipal Code. In evaluating this code enforcement case by code enforcement staff, it was discovered by town staff that the fence or wall was actually built on top of the two-foot retaining wall, at which point town staff advised the twenty five Isabella property that a grading and drainage plan would be required, as is required with construction of retaining walls. Grading and drainage plans are issued by the Department of Public Works. A grading and drainage plan was submitted and approved by the Department of Public Works. However, those approved civil engineering plans did include details that misrepresented existing topographic conditions of the site. Specifically, those plans falsely noted that existing grade created grade reflecting that two-foot grade differential between the two properties at twenty five Isabella and fifteen Isabella, not the existing grade that existed at the property before any physical improvements were performed. So during the course of this code enforcement case, the property owner subsequently submitted a planning commission variance application to allow consideration for a fence in excess of the municipal code's otherwise maximum allowable height of six feet as well as for the construction of a retaining wall less than five feet from a property line, also a standard as required by the municipal code. At their March two thousand and twenty-two meeting, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, took public testimony and voted five zero to deny the variance request. As they determined, they were not able to make all four required variance findings in order to support the request. I'll speak to those four required findings in summary momentarily. So copies of the planning commission packet, the approved planning commission meeting minutes, as well as a link to the planning commission reported video were included as part of the council packet. The applicant subsequently submitted an appeal application of the commission's denial, which is what the council is being asked to consider tonight. To grant a variance, the Atherton Municipal Code requires the decision maker to make all four required findings that are shown here on the screen. As provided in much more detail within the staff report, is not found that the application meets all four required findings in order to support approval of a variance. Variances are intended to address hardships that result from a unique or special condition of a property that are not self-created artificial physical improvements to a property. Granting of this variance could be considered the granting of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations placed upon other properties in the vicinity. As other properties in the vicinity have constructed fences and or walls between their adjacent neighbors based on existing topographic conditions that were not artificially created and issuing such an exception pertaining directly to the individual circumstances of this site, not upon the nature of the property itself. Granting a variance of the as-built fence or wall may adversely affect the interests of the general public or residents in the vicinity as it does create an inconsistent height situation between adjacent properties that is not consistent with development standards in the vicinity. One item of public comment was received on this appeal application from the adjacent neighbor at fifteen Isabella in opposition to the appeal request and was included as part of your staff report attachments. Should the council approve the appeal application, it would allow for the existing as-built wall fence to remain as is an alter. Should the council deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the planning commission to deny the variance, then code enforcement and the town attorney's office would continue the abatement process on the non-conforming structure. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. We also have Department of Public Works and Code Enforcement here as well. Thank you.
Mayor DeGolia, just as a point of order, I do recommend that before we dive into this public hearing that the council explain if they have had any ex parte communications regarding this particular topic. An ex-party communication includes but is not limited to discussions with any party outside of today's meeting. It includes any site visits that you have done, or it includes if you have watched the planning commission meeting that previously occurred.
Okay. Comments on ex-party communications, Bill?
I went to the site when I saw this in the pack and I looked at the fence from both sides and measured the fence. I did not have any contact with either neighbors or anybody else in the area, and I have not discussed this with anybody other than the city manager during the review.
And me.
And and yourself, yes.
I watched the planning.
I watched the planning commission meeting too. That was.
I watched the planning committee meeting.
Okay.
I watched the planning commission meeting.
I visited the site, looked at both sides, watched the entire planning commission meeting and discussed it at length with George, our city manager, before I finished watching the planning commission meeting. Other than that, other than saying hello to Rose, I haven't had any conversation with anybody else.
And I watched the planning commission hearing only the part related to this portion, not the entire meeting. And I have been to the site. I could only see the wall from the fifteen Isabella side because the gate at twenty five Isabella was closed. And while I considered climbing up on the wall and looking over it, there was somebody parked on the other side of the road and I decided that wasn't the best discretion, so I didn't do it. And I've had conversations on this with both with the vice mayor and with city manager.
And you can thank me for not having to watch the whole thing because I told George to send out something telling him approximately where to start it.
He did.
I took.
And that's what I responded to. Okay, I think that addresses all of the ex-party communication, so I will open the public hearing. And well, the first, I take it that the first time on the public hearing will be public comments from those present. Please.
Andrew Waters, attorney representing the property owner at twenty five Isabella, Ms. Wayna Yu, who is present tonight. In our view, the issue here is whether the town officials directives or positions can be fully relied on by residents in building out their properties. And we appreciate the town's position outlined in the latest report as well as tonight's presentation and comments. But we respectfully disagree, including the views expressed tonight that any type of intentional misrepresentation occurred in conjunction with the construction. The bottom line is that in reliance on the town officials who were informed at every step of the way, my client spent more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on her wall. And she took the town officials at their word and built her out, built out her house, including the wall and footing. It's almost three hundred feet long. We think the situation is similar to the legal authorities that I cited in the appeal letter. I'm not going to reargue the appeal letter. There's ample supporting documentation in there that indicates the neighbor is being informed and approving the wall as designed and the the interactions with the town officials. But we do think that because my client cannot just tear out her wall or regrade the site, that it is efficient and equitable to grant the variance from the standpoint of attorney fees and taxpayer funds. Tonight is our effort to resolve this at the lowest level possible. And we recognize that everyone can disagree or agree, and that's the decision. But I'd like to offer additional testimony from my client if the town has any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone in the council?
Specifically?
Well, I mean.
Okay, just one. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for all the backup information that you provided us. I think there are twenty-two neighbors that you surveyed with a with a survey.
My client directly interacted with them.
Yeah, you know, with that, with a survey like this.
Yes.
So was there any other information that was given to the rest, the neighbors or just this survey question?
Probably have my client answer that question directly.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, I have a question. So in the course of doing the regrading that planning staff described and building the two-foot retaining wall, were there any special circumstances that you feel apply to the property that would warrant a variance that were not self-created?
In all fairness, nothing beyond what we stated in the appeal letter. So, no.
Okay, okay.
In the planning commission meeting, I believe, I believe it was in there. I guess the one of the things was brought up with regards to the retaining wall and and the restriction on the five-foot setback for something like that. And I think staff had indicated that, you know, that was in the ordinance, and I think that the answer was, well, we didn't know about it. Is, did I, did I remember that right?
That may be a correct summary of the of the town's view, sir. But our view is we categorically deny any intentional misrepresentation in conjunction with this project.
No, I'm not saying you intentionally did it, but but not knowing what the ordinances are. You know, when the architect or the construction, you know, general contractor, he should have known. If he's worked, if he's worked in this town before, which I hope he probably had and has a business license here. Hopefully, he would have known what the ordinances are and he may have advised you or he should have anyway.
Agreed, you should have advised the property owner here, sir. There may be some rights that my client has against the builder or the contractor. So to your point, I acknowledge that.
Which is a separate issue.
Right, sir.
Thanks.
But relevant. Okay. Well, other question? Did anyone else have a question? No, okay.
Well, I didn't get mine answered.
Well, what? Do you want to restate it?
Yes.
In the, you're gonna have that, but that, you didn't get it answered because he suggested the property owner answer it rather than he answer it. This is the question on the survey.
Yes, I thought my client answered that, but it may not have been audible.
It was not to me.
Over the fax and survey. Can someone read that? It's two sentences.
Is it attached?
Yeah, yeah, read that. So I see in the packet, there's twenty-two signed surveys in support of your appeal by your neighbors. And many of these people I know personally and I respect a great deal. But I've just in reading what they are asked to respond to, was this the only document that they received?
Yeah, that's the only document. And then time my assistant Desiree, she visited all the neighbors door by door and she explained it. That letter was made by my architect, Steve Barlick. She made, he made that letter because we received a formal email from the town. They suggest us to go through various application to to apply for like approval of the height only because at then time the public department, building department, the police department, they have, they have, they had already handled the retaining wall issue by asking us build a two hundred eighty feet long drainage cost a lot. And and they also knew about the two feet like a soil was added recently. But the suggestion we got from the town was and the as-built grading into the plan, civil plan, and get approval. Finally, the town approved it and will build the two hundred eighty feet long drainage to satisfy the town, also to satisfy my neighbor. Because I know that that idea was from my neighbor about the drainage because I got a text message, which I have already submitted to the town August fourth, two thousand nineteen, while the wall was during congestion. I met my neighbor on site and later she texts me said, can you confirm you are built drainage at your side? I said, yes, we have already have a one hundred feet. She said, okay. So she knows, she knows about, she knew about the soil difference and the wall height.
Okay, so I just, if I could maybe just read into the record what this survey asked the the neighbors to maybe agree to. And if this is really the only document that they were asked, I can kind of understand why they would maybe support that. But if they had had maybe some more information, they may have asked more questions about it. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, if you want to read it into the record, you can, and then we'll take other questions.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. This is regarding to the town of Atherton to us regarding the property line fencing fifteen and twenty-five Isabella. The first paragraph is, we are the owners of twenty-five Isabella Avenue in Atherton. We are writing in support of allowing the wall between our property and our neighbor at fifteen Isabella to remain. There is a two-foot height difference between our yards. If the six-foot height is measured from fifteen Isabella side, the resulting four-foot tall wall at our side poses a privacy concern for fifteen Isabella. And then it's signed by you, the property owner. And then the right below it is for our neighbors. As the owners of twenty-eight Isabella or all the other residents who signed it, they gave their own addresses. We have no concerns with the height of the currently existing wall height between our neighbors at fifteen Isabella and twenty-five Isabella. So there's approximately twenty-two of these. But I think without all the kind of background information, I think that they would not have, you know, a clarity of agreeing or not agreeing at that point. So I just want to raise that
Of course.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you applied to do that right on the property line, that was granted because were you aware that your neighbor wouldn't be able to do any planting or run water or do anything on their side of the fence? Was that issue brought up to you?
Then was according to the structural design, there is a big footing on the wall because the wall is eight feet tall and then side. And we did ten feet deep tiers, about forty pieces. So then it require a big footing. Then it was in the structural design, which has been, which have had been approved by my neighbor before the wall started. Yeah, started construction. So on both sides, the foundation will take some room. Yes, my side is the same.
But she can't plant any screening on her side of the property because her driveway is right there, at least what it looks like to me. Is that correct?
Her driveway was close to the wall, to the original fence at the beginning. Pretty close at the beginning. Now we had a, we have a big foundation, that's why, yeah, the room is smaller than before.
I guess I have a question. How, was she granted the ability to put that retaining wall right on the property instead of five feet from the property? Or was that, how did that happen? It seems like there's two things. You've got the retaining wall, which is one, not five feet from the property. And then number two, there's the fence on top of it. So were the, were those two two-step process? How did that work with the city?
If you're asking for staff, that's Stephanie's question.
Yes.
With respect to the retaining wall, the two-foot retaining wall and the fence, was, did that go through a permitting process, Stephanie?
No, it did not. So my conversations with the building department and the public works department was that there is no permit required for a good neighbor fence, a standard six-foot fence between two. for a good neighbor fence, a standard six-foot fence between two properties. And that was what was informed by such staff to the property owners at twenty-five Isabella. The construction of the two-foot tall retaining wall on the property line happened at some point without a permit from the town.
So I, I have a question regarding that, which either of you could answer. Which is, I understand that the essence of your complaint is that the town building department approved the fence when you submitted the grading report and I take it the fence. That, that, that that was approved, and as I understand the planning department's presentation, that they believe that that what, they, they acknowledged that that was approved, but that they say that it was not fully informed because there was a two-foot grading increase from what it had originally been in twenty sixteen. And that, that wasn't informed or wasn't communicated when the permit for the fence was submitted. What, what my question is, why didn't you get or seek a permit when you did the two-foot, or the, the two-foot retaining wall within the five feet of the property line? Because I understand that requires a permit, even if a good neighbor fence doesn't.
So on the year twenty twenty.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
On the year twenty twenty, so the public department and the building department, the police department, the office, the town officer visited our defense. They checked the fence in person and, and then time they asked our civil engineer to reach out to the town to find the solutions. So they didn't let us know we need a permit for the, like a retaining wall or some, they just said, ask your civil engineer to contact the town to find the solutions. So our civil engineer, which was Lee and Breeze, they reached out to the town to the multiple departments and the town officer told her, you need to, first thing, you need to update the, and its building along the wall as, as its grading along the wall into the civil plan. Second, you need to build a drainage to, to like a to avoid future possible flood. So, and our civil engineer has a lot of email I have submitted to, we have submitted all the evidence to Stephanie and there are tons of, a lot of email. Civil engineer communicated with public department and also building, building department. We have, we have all the email records to show that our civil engineer said, okay, I know you have already visited the, the job site and checked the wall. I know you had the concerns. And so we need to update the, and, and, and its grading to the plan. So he, she has already let the multiple department know we would do that. So they agreed and they approved, they give us permit.
But, okay, so I, I don't know if I understood everything that you said, but I understand you got approval, but at the, the, the foundation on which you got approval was the grading that then existed, which included that two-foot retaining wall, right? That, that was already there. My question is, what I understand from the planning staff is that you never applied for, to get a permit to build that retaining wall.
Yeah, because the town didn't suggest us, suggest us to do three department, public department, building department, the police department. Nobody told us we need to do that. They just said you build.
But did you tell them that you, that you were going to build a retaining wall?
No, so at that time, the wall has been done.
No, but when you first did the wall, did you apply for a permit when it was first done?
We, we never had a permit because the town, our, the town officer told our, like a general contractor, no permit needed. You just discuss with.
But, but my, but my understanding from what planning said is that no permit is needed to build the fence, but that, and I understand all of that and, and, and I'm not saying that you attempted to mislead anyone. But my question is, it doesn't sound like you applied for a permit when you built the retaining wall in the first place.
We didn't know, nobody let us know we needed a permit for that.
But that, I mean, that's the contractor's job, really. I mean, that ignorance of law isn't a defense. It, it, if, if I don't know that I can't build a thirty-foot high wall at my house and I, my contractor goes ahead and does it and I just don't apply for a permit, I'm gonna lose that, right? They're gonna, I'm gonna have to tear that wall down. So the fact that you didn't know that you needed a permit, that doesn't work unless somebody told you, you don't need a permit. And I, you haven't said that.
Yeah, we just kind of, unless there are further questions, we just have a kind of a closing statement, if that's okay?
Well, no, I got another question.
Yeah, so there was, did somebody come out and measure the front fence? Did, did, did an inspector come out and measure the front fence? Which also has a six-foot high li, height res, uh, limitation, but in some cases, including the pillars, there's nine feet, two inches. The, the front fence is not in compliance either. I just want to point that out, but here's a second question for you. When you filled that, put the landfill in to raise the elevation in compliance with, with the ordinances that we have that say if you're in a flood plain, you can raise the structure two feet, that, that says structures, right? And, and, but your, your contractor, I guess, didn't understand that and he, he filled two feet on the whole property, as, as I understand it. Is that not correct? As opposed to just raising the pads of the, of the buildings two feet? Yeah, yeah.
Actually, it was not only for the structures, so approval permit at the very beginning, it was also for the driveway. And we have a very big, like a patio, like all the hard, hard surface was raised up to fit in the original plan back to two thousand sixteen.
So there was a plan for doing the, raising the elevation two feet?
Yes, that's correct, and the very beginning plan on the year two thousand sixteen.
So Stephanie, what, is that true and? Stephanie?
Yes. My conversation with the Department of Public Works staff, who approved the civil grading and drainage plans, noted that there was approval for grading in elevation range around the building of the main residence, as is permitted by the municipal code.
Right.
The overall site grading change outside of the building foundation was not approved under permit prior to its work being done.
Okay, fine, thank you. So, so it wasn't approved to be out on the outside. Just where the house was and the, if you have a pool house or you have your garage, that stuff was allowed to be higher up.
I think you need to check the two thousand sixteen plans, the very original one. All our driveways, everything then has been raised up two feet in the, or the first plan. Because and then time civil, civil engineer has a letter, he said it is necessary to raise up for all those areas. Maybe you can double-check the, the plans, the original plan.
Okay. One, one other question, does the two-foot retaining wall go all the way down the fence? All the way, the three hundred and fifty feet or whatever the whole fence is? Okay.
There's a drain under the, there's a drain on the twenty-five Isabella side that takes care of the flooding problem.
Like a French drain?
I'm not sure the exact term, it's like, it's like a pipe in the ground.
I see.
It's actually, the two hundred eighty feet is solid gin. Before we built the solid gin, we had already built a one hundred feet French gin. But during the discussion between my civil engineer and the town, like a building bit, department and a public department and then time back to the year twenty twenty, they did not think it will work, the one hundred feet French gin. So the town asked us to build a two hundred eighty feet solid gin.
Other questions?
No, no.
No.
Okay, do you want to make a closing statement?
Sir, so in summary, I mean, perhaps we can disagree about the specifics or what was approved or wasn't approved. But the bottom line is my client relied on the approvals and constructed and maintained her wall. And that's what the basis is for our, that's one of the points we raised in the appeal letter. And without, you know, rearguing what's in the appeal, we just ask for your discretion in doing what's equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other comment? Jim?
Jim Heslin, my wife Rose Howe and I are the owners of fifteen Isabella. Neighbors who've been referred to earlier this evening. I just wanted to make a few points. One, we're very supportive of the staff report. We think it's thorough, it's correct. It states what, really the only issue before you is that there are four statutory requirements to be met before granting a variance. And the applicants for the variance have met none of those. So on that ground alone, there, there's no reason to reverse the decision of the planning commission. But I also just want to clarify a couple of points, just maybe more personally than having directly any legal implication on this. There seems to be an assumption by our neighbors at twenty-five Isabella that we approved the fence that they built, and we did not. We approved the fence that was sent to us on, in March two thousand nineteen, which clearly showed no grade change on either side of the fence. An earlier plan that they had sent to us in early February two thousand nineteen showed the retaining wall with the fence above it. We were very concerned about that and would never, ever approve of that because we didn't want one. The two-foot grade change, it had our boundary, that was just unacceptable to us. We spoke with the Atherton Building Department. They looked at it and said, this is totally impermissible. We will talk with your neighbors. Now, I can't say that I have evidence of what they told their neighbors, but in an email that our property manager received from our neighbor after sending us the first plans with the retaining wall, she goes, oh, we've now spoken with the town and here are revised plans, and the revised plans clearly showed no retaining wall. There were different fence heights and it wasn't quite clear what the real fence plan was gonna be, but our major concern was addressed. So we said, okay. But what I really want to point out, what I think is, it shows the whole tenor of this is that in the appeal letter, they make a statement, they include the first plans that were sent to us that we never approved and say those are the plans we approved. And it's just not true, and that just galls me that they would submit this appeal to the town with a significant misrepresentation. I don't know if it was intentional or not. But they are telling you that we approve plans showing a grade change and that is simply not true. And I'm very upset about that and I'll say thank you and good evening.
Okay, we'll wait for some questions, Jim. Bill and then Diane.
Yeah, I, I understand all that we've just discussed, okay? And then looking at some of the documentation that was submitted that's been in the pack, there was a series of text messages. So you said the, the discussion and start of the building was in March or something like that. Two thousand nineteen and I have at least represented here, there's two sets of, of text messages. One on the twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen at nine oh seven, the concrete block contractor said he would complete the stucco wall today, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Can you have your people come by and check it out? There was a reply by Rose that said, you know, and then there was some additional comment later in the day that said, you have any idea what time the property manager is gonna come? And, and there was a response by Rose that says it sounds terrible, like a terrible situation. If it helps, I can assure you now that we will have no problem with the stucco fence itself. We are concerned about the cleanup and the pot. So the wall was built and then this email was sent, which is very confusing to me.
Okay.
Later on, like a finish, later on, there was discussion about damage to the property and wanting who to pay, and there was a disagreement with all the other information. And, and I, I have to wonder whether or not this is about who's paying for the damages and, and remediating the property as opposed to this.
Okay, um, i- it's a long history and for much of the history, we did our best to accommodate our neighbor. Unbeknownst to us, the entire construction project was staged on our property, not her property. Turned out, you know, it wasn't that significant a burden to us because our property wasn't occupied at the time. But we always assume, you know, that the property would be set back to its original condition. But the real problem is number one, that during the entire construction, it was not clear that that was gonna be a retaining wall. In fact, it's, it's really an eight-foot concrete block fence, the lower two feet are retaining wall and the upper six feet are a fence. It was backfilled later to match the rest of the grade on the property. So we never knew until twenty twenty even that it was to raise two feet on that side of the fence. For much of the time after that, we were curious why dirt had been left on our side of the fence. It was just piled up on the fence and we thought, it's not a very good way to finish this. But there were a number of issues and we were talking with our neighbor about removing that, fixing the planting area, which we didn't realize no longer existed because it was covered up with dirt above the, the grade. And, you know, our property manager raised many issues. And one of the issues that our property manager says is you have to redo the struck, stucco because it's different colors, it's cracked. We just said, look, it's a fence, you know, stucco's fine. We're not complaining about the stucco. There are a lot of other things we're complaining about, but not the stucco. But it wasn't really until, without our permission, our neighbor removed the dirt using a front-end loader that did more damage, that we realized that, you know, the footing was there. I mean, the footing's two feet below grade on their side of the fence. It's at or above grade on our side of the fence, and frankly, after a while, we just go, no, this fence is an abomination. You know, we, when we talked with the town, because we didn't have meetings with the town, you know, they never really told us that the grade was a problem. Which is a little curious to me because they told us that, you know, originally that there couldn't be a retaining wall, but our assumption was, okay, the town figured out the grades, okay, and you know, maybe that's not it, and, and our concern was just the quality of construction of the fence. And that's why we asked the town, you know, building department, it turned out to be the code inspector to come in. And we were surprised when they say, by the way, that fence needs to be lowered two feet. You know, and, and our first reaction was, you know, that, that's not good for anybody, right? But over time, when we saw, you know, how, we saw the first variance application, we realized the misrepresentations that were made, the constant reference to the fact that we approved this fence when we never approved of the fence. You know, when the letter is sent to the twenty-three neighbors, two of whom, by the way, said, sure, it's fine with us, but the only real people who matter are your neighbors in fifteen Isabella, you know, and if they don't like it, then we don't like it. So strike two people from the twenty-two on that list. You know, it's just why, one, the people are told, when our neighbors were told by the building department that they could not have the retaining wall. And then they just ignore that.
But that was after the retaining wall had been built, right?
Yeah, no, no, they, that's, that's my point. When we first got the plans, the plans that were given to us in February two thousand nineteen by our neighbor, it showed a retaining wall with a fence on top of it. We found that unacceptable. We went to the town building department, to Mike Greenling and several others. And they said that is absolutely impermissible. We will talk to your neighbors.
But the, but at that point, if I understand that the retaining wall had been built before two thousand nineteen.
This is before construction ever started. This is at the outset. This is when the first thing we heard from our neighbor was a proposal that they build a fence. They contacted our property manager and had a plan attached to it, and the plans in our paper. and had a plan attached to it. And the plans in our papers, if you want to see it.
I, I saw that, you presented that at the planning commission.
I did. And that was unacceptable to us. We went to the town, the town told us that was unacceptable to the town.
But I, I, so maybe I misunderstood. I, I thought they regraded sometime right after two thousand sixteen is what Stephanie said. And so I assumed the retaining wall had been built before two thousand nineteen.
The retaining wall. To clarify there, it's, it's not a, there aren't two separate structures. There is an eight foot tall from, measured from grade on our side, concrete block, block wall that was built. Now, we watched it being built. Most of the time, it was a trench in the ground with more rebar than you'll believe. With a concrete foundation, the footing that is now exposed on our side, buried on their side. And then the fence was built and then it was backfilled to match the rest of the grade. We never knew. Number one, we never knew it was going to be that tall until it was done. We certainly never knew it was going to be backfilled. We'd always assumed that because the, it, again, I don't, I wasn't in on the conversation between the building department and our neighbors. But remember, they had sent us a plan with a retaining wall and a six foot fence. After that, they send an email to our property manager saying, okay, we've spoken with the town, the town came out to speak with us, and that's in my papers too. The copy of the email from our neighbor to Ann Wilber, our property manager. And here's our revised plan. And the revised plan, it was on two PDFs. One PDF was a very old one, a structural plan. The other one was a newer one. But both of them clearly showed no grade change. And at that point, okay, they understand there'll be no grade change. And we were really happy for the next two years with that aspect of it. It wasn't till well after the fence was built that we even knew there was a grade change on the side because we couldn't see it. It was always the same. You know, for thirty years that we've owned the property, you know, for the new fence, there was a cyclone fence between the properties, a six foot cyclone fence. You know, and that's, and the grade change stays the same. Fence was built and it was backfilled and we didn't even see that.
Okay, Diana?
I, it's really unfortunate situation and I really feel for you guys. If we, if we were, if the city asks them to tear down the wall, you're now going to have to live through the construction of that whole wall being torn down and moved. What would be, what would you like to have hap- what, what would be the best thing? If you set, set aside who's wrong, who did what? Would you rather have them build like big planting things on your side? Is there any solution or do you really want them to move everything? What's best for you?
To apply with state law, there's probably is no decision. And no, I mean, there are no alternatives. That's out of compliance. The variance is inappropriate. So if the town has a legal solution to this that solves our problems and solves their problems, we'd love to hear it.
But I'm asking, what would be best for you separate? Like, if she's going to have to spend one hundred, two hundred million dollars to move that thing, is there something that would, she could do on your side to make it better for you?
I mean, there's nothing, no. I mean, we got an eight foot fence on our side, eight foot. There, there's nothing that can be done to it on our side.
So you, you want them to move the, the, well, they should have never built that retaining wall, but so you want. So you move the five, so you want the five foot retaining wall and then the fence separate?
Them to have a.
Legally, even if that means you're going to go through another year of construction on your side. That's your, that would, that's what you would prefer.
If they do that, they put up a construction wall on our side of the fence and they stay on their property. We're no longer going to let them come in and use our property as a staging platform and just abuse the property, which they did in retrospect. So that's fine. We'll live with a two foot green fence up there.
Yeah, I wanted to follow, Jim, I wanted to follow up with, it was, when I was discussing it and then, you know, I understand and I appreciate your, your embellishing everything. And so my, my point of the emails wasn't to put blame on anyone. I just wanted to ask that question. I understand that, that there was also emails with regards to the substantial amount of damage on your property driveway as well as, as you point out, the footing of the, of the retaining wall structure that was built. It looks like the way it's done by, it was designed by a structural engineer to support a taller wall on top. If it was just a retaining wall, it wouldn't have had the same footing. But that, that, that footing is at your grade and so you can't even plant something there. And, and so what your, your request on remediation was that, that they fix your driveway and, you know, fix the cracks in the wall, make it look nice and things like that. But then come up with a solution for plantings that would allow you to plant screening there. Is that, that is, did I read those emails properly? And of course, they were from, they were from your property manager. This is one of the problems we have. We've got two different property managers talking to one another and the owners are sitting here saying, hey, wait a second, that's not what we said, so.
Well, we are in very close touch with our property manager, so we stand by everything she said. We may have disagreed with some of her demands, but, but we, we took care of that. When we were exchanging, when my wife and our property manager were exchanging messages with our neighbor, the fence was a fait accompli, so far as we, we were concerned. We thought that's not really what we expected, how did it get to be that tall? But somehow it must be okay with the city because, you know, it's there. It wasn't until after sort of all discussions had broken down with our neighbor and we really, when we saw the footing, that was sort of the last straw. I don't know if a footing can be a straw, but that just infuriated me. That they would, they would have the nerve to build that. You know, sort of here, here you neighbors, you take this, these crumbs, we'll build a nice fence on our side. You know, what's that for neighborliness? Anyway. So at that point, we brought in the city. The city told us that that fence is going to have to come down. And at that point, we go, are there really no alternatives to that? And they went back and a couple of ma- uh, they, a couple of months later, it was COVID, things were moving slowly. They said, there are only two alternatives. That fence height comes down or you raise your grade two feet. And I'm there, you know, we can't do that, you know. So at that point, we were under the impression that, you know, the town was going to enforce the code and that, and they also said that there's virtually no chance of a variance being granted on this because the town does not grant variances on, on fence height. Then it went through the initial variance request. At that point, we opposed it. Initially, we weren't sure whether we wanted to oppose it for the reasons you point out. We're, we're going to suffer too. We've already suffered. But, you know, so be it. We're a law, law-abiding citizens. But at that point, it occurred to me, it's not the fence height that's the problem. It's the two feet that they raised the, the grade on the other side. And at that point, then the town came back and said, okay, yeah, you're right. You've got two code violations here, both of which require a variance, which is where we're at now. Statutory requirements for granting a variance are very clear in this state. There are the four requirements that are in the staff report. And, you know, and none of them are met. Now, that said, if the town can propose a way that legally you can go forward, grant a variance that, you know, solves all these problems, we're willing to listen. But, you know, I, I, I don't see a way from here to there. I see that fence coming down. The retaining wall being taken out and then starting over. And if it's a new cyclone fence, I'll be happy.
So the, there's a different alternative as well is that you could be given some time for both of you all to try and negotiate something that the, the variance is based on the code enforcement that was initiated by a complaint. And if that complaint is taken off the table, then there's no need for a variance. So if there's something that the two of you could work out over the next couple of months and come back to the council, that might be a way to solve that problem as well, other than, other than just a, a one or a zero type of answer.
We're not anxious fully to negotiate with my neighbors anymore. We'll talk with our lawyer, but.
Okay, Bob?
Uh, yeah, this is an enforcement action. We have, we have lots of things in Atherton that don't meet the letter of a code. And the property owner at some point may get a code enforcement issue, have a co- code enforcement issue when they get a new neighbor who doesn't like the fact that the setback's wrong or the wall height's wrong or whatever. So it's an enforcement action and it, it looks like it's going to be, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar of code enforcement action, which is a little, you know, I grew up in the Midwest and you could have bought our whole town for that much money. Stephanie, can you put the picture of the wall up, please? If you're still there, yeah, there she is.
I'm here. Yeah, bear with me for a second. Let me pull it up and I'll share my screen.
While you're doing that, can I ask a question? So I haven't been able to look at it from Twenty-Five Isabella's side because the gate was closed and nobody answered when I rang the buzzer. But from your side, there's obviously discoloration on the stucco fence. That looks like it's about two feet high that goes down your property line. I don't know how far it goes. Is that because dirt had been piled up against the fence and then taken away? Or is that because water has seeped through? That was dirt that had been piled up on that side and then removed?
Eighty cubic or thirty cubic yards, I forget what, just, I, I mean, it was like there was an attempt to make, you know, raise our grade two feet.
It was probably the soil from digging down and just kind of.
No, he said there was soil that was removed that had been on the fence. So I'm just asking. That's what it looks like. No, it looks like more than soil.
And that's the way they build footings. They don't worry about a fine finish on a footing. So the stucco guy thought it was going to be a, have the same height on e- either side, so he didn't finish it perfectly. That can be remedied and not for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I guess here's, here's my point. This is the fif- the twenty-five side.
With the cypresses.
What's this distance between the wall and the driveway?
Probably ten feet.
Okay, so if, if we move, we say tear down the wall, tear down the retaining wall, but of course, you have the right to put up a new retaining wall five feet from the property. So you'll put it here somewhere. And then you'll build a, a wall that is only six foot side, six foot tall on your side. So everybody standing on this driveway, everybody walking in, walking out, walking wherever, it's going to be looking right into that property.
Right, because it's going to feel like four feet.
So whether, I, I, I guess I have a serious question of whether a six foot high wall is beneficial to you. I see some other things that need to be fixed for sure, have to be fixed. But I sense that there's a better solution here.
That was exactly the question that I was going to ask, is how are you going to deal with it from your side if in fact they've got two feet, let's say it's moved back five feet from the wall, like they can do and put a retaining wall more than five feet from the wall. Then when they're standing on their driveway, if that, if there's only a six foot fence, it's going to look like a four foot fence. It's six foot on your side, but their property is up two feet. So then you're going to have somebody who's taller than four feet looking right over the wall into your property.
Not if they put proper screening up.
True. Screening, screening would be necessary. I agree with that, but. But I think that's an issue. Go ahead.
I like that, I like your screening idea, but I'm, I'm concerned about on your side because the existing driveway is so close to the existing wall and you've got those footings that are sticking out. But, uh, so you would have to.
Well, if the wall's taken down, the footings are.
Right, no, but I mean, if, if the wall is left up, how feasible, and I'm not advocating this, this is just an open-ended question. If you could irrigate all along there and create a lovely, like, you know, raised planter bed, right? To essentially raise the grade at that wall level, but you have all the rest of it. But you have like a little raised planter bed that you then plant, I don't know, cypresses or something all along there so that it, it, it protects you from that way. I, I feel that you've been wronged. I think that the building department, whether they made a mistake, but from what I saw in the video from the planning commission, there were plans that were submitted to them about the wall or the grading that didn't have the bubble around it to indicate a change in conditions. And you were supposed to, every time you make a change, like a grading plan change of, of conditions, you're supposed to put this little gray bubble around it so that the planner can easily note, oh, this is something that's changed on the project. And I don't think that was done. I don't think that was done so that the planners looked at it and could look at it and make a good judgment. So I think that's a really significant part. Maybe the, uh, maybe it was intentional, maybe it was a mistake. But, you know, for it to kind of get this far, it's a really unfortunate situation. But I really agree that if we lower that, it will be like a four foot wall on their side, looking over into the property. And I don't think in the end it would feel good for you. So how do we? And whether or not, who pays for this new planter box that's going to go along your entire, right?
For a fraction of the cost of what it's going to take to redo everything, for a fraction of the cost. They can build you the most beautiful planter along that wall that the money can, the money can buy. But my, my, my point is, it's an enforcement action that you're forcing here that hopefully there's a way around.
Not to change the subject, but when we were originally talking to the code enforcement officer and the gentleman from the building department, they told us that regardless of what we and our neighbors felt, that they had to get a variance and that wall was going to have to come down. So I'm not sure where this all of a sudden code enforcement action and we can just reach, uh, you know, amicable agreement with our neighbors is coming from, because I haven't heard that before.
No, I don't, I, I, I don't.
Let, let's confirm with Stephanie that assumption. What I understand that both Bill and Bob and Elizabeth have said is that the requirement for a variance is a complaint that came from Fifteen Isabella. Well, just let me say what I understand and then you can correct me. I- i- is a complaint that came from Fifteen Isabella and if that complaint were removed, then a variance, uh, then, then we wouldn't need to be pursuing the variance. Is that accurate?
No, I'll let this, maybe the city attorney go pine. I see the solution you're trying to reach and she could probably elucidate that better.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So to answer your question, the reason why we are here for the variance is because otherwise, code enforcement staff would have to pursue abatement of Twenty-Five Isabella because they did receive the code enforcement complaint from Fifteen Isabella regarding the fence. So if the complaint is withdrawn, then the owner of Twenty-Five Isabella could necessarily withdraw their request for a variance as well. If it pleases the council, I can provide you with some options for your consideration. I don't know if there was any other public comments, but I'm happy to shape kind of the options before you if you'd like.
Okay. Is there, let's just see if there's any other public comment. I, I don't see any other. I, I don't see any other public comment. Uh, Rose?
And any resolution you have, um, we would like it to have it code compliant, being law-abiding citizens. And the planter box is an idea that we thought about. This is not a place where we want to be right now.
Okay.
We have this property for thirty years and this was just an impossible situation. We tried and tried and tried. We gave in and, and some of those texts and emails were out of context and, you know, so, but we won't go into that situation. Planter boxes. Now keep in mind, we've, we've got about this much left on, you know, in an area by the driveway.
Could that be expanded at all?
No.
Because it, because it would take away from the driveway.
If anybody can go and measure this, we can barely get into our driveway now. There's been some, we've got teenage girls. It's, you know, they've hit that fence a couple of times. So I don't want to build something. Uh, even at somebody else's expense that's going to get damaged in the future.
Because of those footings, right?
Yeah, the footings and just the narrow space that suddenly disappeared. We had plants there before with the cyclone fence. And that was fine with us, you know, we weren't fancy, but it worked. So, um. You know. If you have suggestions, that's fine, but this has been a frustrating process. You know, they've built a twelve foot fence in the back and somebody mentioned a nine foot fence in the front. Where does this end? You know, what, what's, what's the, what's the impact of all these mistakes?
Right, right.
Stephanie, can you put up the photo of the fence again that we looked at when Bob did his illustration?
Yes, I'll pull that right back up.
Okay, so it, it's, it's really hard to see, but so Rose, if I understand what you said. Is from the seventeen, from the fifteen Isabella side, is this the fifteen Isabella side?
Right, that's fifteen Isabella.
So I'm looking at attachment number six that was in the packet. And it looks like more, you, you said it's just a foot.
No, it's only, it's where the garage is. Because you have to back out at the garage. You have a very limited space, so you can see the truck.
Well, yeah, is this a rock?
Uh, no, that's some shrub, I think.
Oh, that's a shrub, okay.
But there's a garage there, uh, and cars.
So back there next to the garage, it's only, it's only a foot?
That's where the constricted area is, where we lost, there was about a two foot planter area. There's about six inches left in dirt now.
So i- if, if you had essentially a retaining wall that went from whatever up here. All the way back to the garage and where, you know, where you basically raised your level behind some kind of a support. A, a secure support that isn't just a temporary thing, but really a permanent support. That, that looks like it could address the issue up to the garage, but I have no idea what happens back there.
Yeah, the garage, there, there's just no space to give up.
So that's the big, so that there's no benefit to that if it, it, from the garage back?
They don't have to take the planter all the way to the garage.
Yeah, just don't take.
I've done that several times where you, 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 you have to. Kind of fantail the, the driveway to fit the garage, but what you do further down the driveway is irrelevant.
So i- is the hardscape of the garage? Does that have the proper setback from the side yard? What's the setback from the, from the garage to the property line?
I don't.
Other side setback.
It has to be ten feet.
Is, um, set so that, you know, cars. Uh, go parallel Isabella in and out of the garage. So there, there's a space between the front of the garage and now.
Oh, you drive, you drive through and then go like that. You don't drive in.
The street and then you turn into the garage and then you have to back up from the garage.
Yeah.
Oh, so they go around, okay.
Space out, then.
No, you can't, right.
Okay, thank you. Well. I, I, I've got to say from, from my view, this isn't dealing with the code issues. It's just a view issue. Which, this is the, this is the angle I've been able to look at it, which is, and I haven't seen this angle, but. From this angle. I, the wall looks like a, a problem because of the coloration, but Bob says that's easily fixable. I don't see a height problem from looking at it. I understand that, let me finish. I understand the code issue. Um, but it seems to me that. If there could be any kind of a planter issue that twenty-five Isabella would be one hundred percent responsible for. That could fix your problem, it would save them a hell of a lot of money. Uh, I think they're in violation. I think they're in violation because they didn't get a permit for the retaining wall, right?
Yeah.
The issue with the fence is a whole different issue, but they're in violation because they didn't get an issue, a permit for the retaining wall. Which I understand the solution to that is to take it down.
As well.
And if they take it down, that puts the wall totally in violation because it's an eight foot wall. It's, it's an incredibly expensive procedure for them. I don't believe that they intentionally misrepresented anything. I do think that the language in the survey. Is, um, very, very one-sided. It's not clear language that. Uh, anybody is really informing anybody, but that's irrelevant, uh, or that, that's just a note. Um, I, I, that's my opinion. I, I'd like to give you. Uh, the property owners' time to talk about this. I know you don't want to, but. It's, it, it's, it, it's the most reasonable solution, I'd say that. And if it, if, if it's not workable, hey, I think. It's unfortunate to have to spend what probably is three hundred thousand hucklers or something to. To redo this down and replace it. That's really unfortunate.
I think following up, I mean, not that only, but. The end result, if they did just build a six foot. From their height.
It's not good.
It's not good.
It will not feel good to you as they're standing on their two foot higher. Grade level, looking over a four foot fence.
Yeah.
And I think that really needs to be analyzed a little bit more for you.
We understand what you're saying, but we sort of thought about that and.
Have you? Okay.
That's very livable from, from our point of view.
Well, see, that's the thing too. For you and me, it'd be very. It's like double my height.
Whether it's eight feet or four feet, you need screening.
Yeah.
So. Well, you have the room for screening all the way down to the garage. I, I don't know what it matters. You don't need to screen next to the garage. Nobody sees in there.
But.
So.
Well, I think, I, 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 I just would like to say, I, I, I agree with, I think, most of the sentiment as well as the planning commission. That this is a, a code violation. Um, but I would like to see perhaps that you all take some time, understanding that that's, might be the way that this ends up. Uh, to, to take some time for you to. Uh, see what might be worked out that you would be happy with. Um, versus, uh.
Are you proposing like a, a time period in one month?
Yeah, we'd like you to maybe come back in September.
Well, we're, we're not engaged in, um, in August, so I think September makes the most sense. Sept- at our September meeting, which is the third Wednesday of September, has to be resolved by then.
Okay, so there is no resolution then to see.
I, 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 I mean, Mona can tell us, she was going to give us some options.
Yeah.
There are some options in the staff report. It doesn't include an option of being able to continue this public hearing.
So we can.
That's an option, that's what is being proposed.
It is an option, and just, just to put it out there, this is a de novo hearing, which basically means that you are not bound by the decision of the planning commission. You get to make a decision all on your own based on all of the information that you've heard today. Um, I'm going to start with the things that you can't do, and then I'll, I'll tell you the thing that you can do. Um, number one, you cannot require twenty-five Isabella to make any kind of payment to fifteen Isabella. To make repairs to their property, to clean it up, to install screening, nothing like that. The other thing that you can't do is you can't mandate the construction of a new fence. That's a private matter between two parties here. It's subject to Civil Code Section eight forty-one, and that section generally states. The, that property owners are mutually bound to maintain fences and construct them. It's not one owner's responsibility. It's generally both of them and they share in, you know, the costs and maintenance and all that good stuff. So, so knowing that, what you actually can do is. And setting aside the options that are most immediately apparent, like granting the variance or denying it. You can continue this public hearing to a date certain. Um, and it could be the third Wednesday of September, the third Wednesday in September, for example. Where this public hearing is continued and you can request that between now and that time. That the parties mutually agree to meet and confer to discuss. Um, options that are available to them that are to their satisfaction. If they can reach a resolution, then fifteen Isabella can withdraw its code enforcement complaint. And if the code enforcement complaint is withdrawn, twenty-five Isabella is no longer reliant on that variance application. And we have a copacetic agreement. So that is something that you may consider.
Great.
Okay, I'd like to move that we have.
Diana wants to make the comment.
I just wanted to express an opinion, is that appropriate? Uh, I do think twenty-five Isabella is in violation. And I think, I, I'm not sympathetic to the three hundred thousand they'd have to pay to take down. On the other hand, you guys are going to, by making this decision, we're trying to give you the option. To settle something so that you don't cut your nose off to spite your face, so that you don't end up spending years for this thing being moved. When there's a way that you guys could resolve it. So we're trying to give you a way to resolve it. That is what I. Is not necessarily clear.
We understand that and, and, you know, that, that's, that's a good impulse. It's just that. We have certain history that tells us that reaching an agreement that's enforceable and acceptable to us seems unlikely.
Well, you don't have to personally be the negotiator.
Well, we have our.
In fact, I suggest to get. But, but there, there must, must be something. Um, I, I would, I would hope there's something that can be done.
Yeah.
I'm very sympathetic.
Yeah.
I, but we're not optimistic.
I know.
I'd like to move that we continue this discussion to the September council meeting. Uh, to allow the, the two parties to, uh, meet and discuss this item and if they can come up with a resolution, that would be great. If not, uh, we will re-adjourn and, and, uh, render a decision.
I mean, reconvene.
Second.
Reconvene, sorry.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on with that, maybe ask twenty-five Isabella if they are also willing to.
Yeah, 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 I'm going to do that. Please.
Yes, my client and I have discussed this and we're perfectly willing to, to meet and confer, negotiate, do whatever we need to do in the next few months. So we're one hundred percent on board with that.
Great, good. And we strongly encourage you to have third parties handle it.
Well, he is.
Because we, we recognize the difficulty, but we want to give you any, I mean, it's very hard to give you more support. I don't know. I, we, we, we want to give you all the support we can to try to resolve it and I. It, it just looks to us like there's a potential solution, so, but we understand it's up to you.
Can I ask one last question before we go to this? I was told that if we did that, let, let, let's say we decide not to enforce it. The second one of those two properties are sold, that it's immediately going to be put back on the docket and we'll be facing this again. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. If the parties agree to an agreement that they decide to record against their properties, it would bind their successors' interests. And prevent something like this from occurring.
There you go, okay.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that without a variance? They can record it?
Yeah.
Sounds like it. They're going to record an agreement. Against the property, so.
So I have a.
Uh, we've got a motion in a second.
Ask a question. Um, can we, uh, visit your property, uh, fifteen Isabella to stand against the wall? No, is anyone living there now? At, at the, okay, all right. I just didn't want to barging.
Oh, yeah, we could go over and stand there, that would be good. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second.
And for the record.
It's a public hearing, we need a roll call, is that correct?
We do need a, a, a roll call and the, uh, Wednesday meeting in September is September twenty-first for the record.
Okay, thank you. And does the motion satisfy your option, Mona?
Yes, that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hawkins.
I mean, you have to start with me. I, 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 I guess I'm not going to vote in favor of that, and the reason why. Is because I don't think they want it, and I think that it's going, it's going to be back up here in front and all we're doing is adding more time to it. So, and I know you guys will all vote in favor for it because I do want it to happen, but I think it's not fair to you to force you to do that. So I'm going to say no, and everybody else will say yes, so it'll still happen.
Move on.
Toledo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Whitmer.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Okay, we are now moving on to item number thirteen. Which is a public hearing introduction of ordinance amendments to chapter seventeen fifty, landscape screening.
Thank you, counsel. That is me again, Stephanie Davis, principal planner. I'll try to keep my presentation brief. So the council is being asked to introduce amendments to the town's landscape screening ordinance. Um, various topics related to possible amendments to this ordinance have been discussed several times. Through numerous study sessions, both at the planning commission and city council, um, meetings since January of two thousand and twenty-one. So the draft ordinance presented to you tonight was formally considered by the planning commission. At their May meeting in which they did vote four zero that the council, recommending that the council do adopt such amendments. So I'll focus on a summary of the proposed amendments, um, which are subsequently focused on three primary areas. The first are several amendments that would pertain to lots on sloped sites. In the attempt at mitigating the visual bulk. Um, and aesthetic of detached accessory buildings and structures up on hillside properties from their downhill neighbors. So the proposed, um, amendments do include creating subsequent regulations for lots on hillside lots. Versus those on non-hillside lots. The distinction being those with a slope of fifteen percent or greater. Uh, would be considered a hillside lot, simply just again for purposes of landscape screening regulations. Um, these lots, as recommended, would have minimum tree or shrub planting sizes for landscape screening. To be thirty-six inch box size or larger. Uh, lots that were not considered hillside lots would ha- also have increased. Tree and or shrub planting sizes over what the existing ordinance requires at a size of twenty-four inch box size or larger. So other recommendations including with, that would pertain to both hillside and non-hillside lots. Include screening of building lighting to be can taken into consideration. Uh, would be encouraging the planting of either drought resistant and or California native species. Limiting any planting within five feet of a building. If such planting conflicts with any potential California fire code requirements. And, uh, lastly, a series of provisions which would require consideration of any new plantings. To take into consideration existing surrounding heritage trees and those trees required tree protection zones. In the attempts at protecting and maintaining those existing trees. So the second area of amendments pertain to addressing additional landscape screening for towers or architectural projections on buildings. So these are architectural elements of buildings. They're limited in area. But they can protrude up higher than the majority of a building's overall height. This is allowed by code. So such recommendations to address these areas of buildings include additional plantings. Uh, this would be in addition to whatever the standard required landscape screening would be for the site. This additional landscaping specific to these tower architectural elements recommends. A minimum of two forty-eight inch box sized trees. And the location of these trees to be planted inwards towards the property or more closely to that tower. Or architectural projection as opposed to just along the property line. or architectural projection, as opposed to just along the property line, which is where most landscape screening is installed. So the last area evaluated in the series of amendments pertains to landscape screening of accessory dwelling units or other detached buildings, which may only be located four feet from a shared property line. So it's been noted of the challenges for these, in, in these instances, due to the size of the physically limited planting area and what can actually be planted in such a small space. So recommended language has been added that would allow for off-site voluntary screening plants or trees to be planted on an off-site or adjacent property upon agreement with that neighboring property owner. So all of these recommendations that I just summarized and as are more fully detailed in the staff report are included in a tracked change version of an amended landscape screen ordinance, excuse me, screening ordinance that was included as attachment one to your staff report. And although not part of the formal ordinance amendments, a staff also has included as attachment two tracked change amended version of the landscape screening plan checklist that the town arborist provides applicants at the point when they are to submit such a landscape screening plan for internal consistency with the recommended ordinance changes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the Council may have. And our town arborist, who also was a part of preparing these draft recommended amendments, is also here at the meeting and is available as well.
Bill.
Yeah, so in the staff report, first off, thank you very much for showing the track changes. I very much appreciate that and I hope that that's a model as we move forward for any other changes to ordinances. In the Stafford port, it talks about, I guess, in the area about the ADUs, which can be even closer, that screening would be mutually agreed, perhaps. And, and so I've, you know, gone back through the document and I, I can't see where we're, you know, how we're handling mutually agreeable portion of this. If, if perhaps people don't want to plant screening on their side. Is it going to be like, well, you have the choice to plant screening on your side of the slope and, and I'll pay for it, but the guy says, I don't want to do it at all, you need to do something on your side. Do we, how do we manage that? We just say, well, it's impossible because it's within the TPZ four feet or what?
And so we do, within attachment one, it's page thirteen of seventeen, subsection seventeen point five zero point one one zero. We do have language in there that gives an either or that does include some, some language that for any building with a reduced setback, that any landscape screening is included to the greatest extent feasible. And that's more subjective because it will depend on the actual distance, the type of tree or species. And it allows the town arborist to provide her professional opinion if the proposed plantings of whatever species or size they are may be appropriate in that particular physical case.
So if the, if the owner of the adjoining property decides that, okay, you can plant them on my side of the road or on my side of the street. And they say, well, but it's got to be forty-eight foot boxes. Who, who handles that and enforces that that happens? Is that the arborist?
It would be, it would be part of the approved landscape screening plan for the subject development site, which is implemented and authorized by the town arborist for the municipal code.
And when they plant on somebody else's property, then they have the obligation to do the irrigation there? Or is that left up to everybody to discuss and agree or what?
That would be left to the agreement of the way that the language is written between the two property owners.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a follow-on question to that, Stephanie, which is that language in one ten, which reflects some language in the staff report, says, like you referenced it, that they'll be screening to the greatest extent feasible. And then it says may include off-site planting. That sounds not very forceful. Like, if you, if you've got a four-foot setback and you can't plant in that four feet and, and the property owner that's building the ADU that's got a four-foot setback, then may include off-site planning, as long as it's approved by the, the property owner on the other property. The may include seems very uncertain to me. I mean, if it said shall include, if the property owner agrees to it, I, I think you need the required consent of that other property owner and they should have the discretion. But if they decide, yeah, I'd like to have this ADU screened and you can't screen it on your side, the may include implies to me that the builder can just decide, we're not going to do it. We don't, it may include, but it may not include and we're not going to do it.
Sounds like you have your lawyer hat on.
No, I'm dealing with the language. So, so my question to you is, is there a problem with changing that to shall include?
I think we can look at revising for stronger language. We would want to work in concert with the town attorney's office to make sure we're unnecessarily presenting any legal problems in the future with a, with a may versus a shall.
Okay, great.
Mona's on the line. Let's kill it now.
Sure.
I haven't reviewed this ordinance amendment in whole, but I don't think that there's an issue with that language change.
And I think. Yeah, so right, right, if you look at the section that Stephanie referenced, which is seventeen fifty dot one ten, it's, it basically is talking about screening for your, your rear yard setbacks that are less than the underlying zoning district. So let's just say that's four feet for an ADU. It says shall include landscape screening of the building or structure to the greatest extent feasible. And then it says, and may include off-site planting on an adjacent property if neighboring property owners voluntarily agree to allow the property, the planting on their property. I think that makes lots of sense and my suggestion is that we change the word may to shall, I agree.
So the only thing in, in changing the may to shall, it would mean that we have to allow the off-site planting. I think the way that the intent is that it's an option that's reserved for the property owner, but it's conditioned precedent on the agreement of their neighbor.
Well, I, I, I think that the intent would be if it's not feasible to plant the landscape screening on the, on the property that's being built, then that builder should be obligated to plant the landscape screening on the neighboring property if and only if the neighbor agrees to that.
You may need to wordsmith it into two sentences.
So I, I, I don't need to wordsmith it myself. We can ask you guys.
Actually, I do have, I do have a, I, I don't think we can do that. We are not allowed to require any kind of off-site improvements, planting anything of neighbors. So I think that from a legal perspective, the may language is necessary.
Well, I think that's going to cause some problems.
Yeah, I think it will cause some problems too.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I, I have one more question, which is, when we were reviewing the donation plan for Holbrook Palmer Park, we had a pretty good discussion about the size of different tree options. And our arborist advised us that actually there was some benefit to fifteen gallon trees because their roots weren't as constrained as box trees. And that, that was a discussion that we had after we did this landscape screening discussion. But I thought that was a pretty important comment that she made to us. And it just makes me wonder whether we're boxing ourselves in or we should give some flexibility.
In fact, Betsy Colby came to me and insisted that fifteen gallon is better than a big sixty-four inch or forty-eight inch. I thought a twenty-four inch might be okay. I think a twenty-four inch is reasonable. I think you could get, because on the landscape screening, you kind of want an immediate impact.
Yeah, well, I, I, so my, my point is, we've got twenty-four inch, thirty-six inch and forty-eight inch box requirements here. And I understand that we want landscape screen to come up quickly, but I also understand particularly on hillsides, you know, it, it's harder to get the roots to take.
That's true.
And you could easily have, you know, whatever, forty-eight or thirty-six inch box trees die and then have to deal with that. Bill, and then.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with fifteen inch trees, however, fifteen gallon trees. But we have to keep in mind, and I guess that's for the arborist to advise the contractor, that five years from the time of issuance of the permit, so that means before he even put a shovel on the ground, the tree has to cover and screen the whole, perhaps thirty-foot house. And fifteen, you know, fifteen gallon tree is not going to do that. Because most of them plant the, the, the screening right at the end. Now, so, you know, I think that, you know, we have to change our process of working with the contractors and making sure they fully understand it or, or something. But if you allow them to plant small little plants, like today, that's exactly what they do, even though they've taken four and a half to five years to do the construction, you know, the, the, this is not, we don't even enforce it. And so, and, and so who's left with that? It's the neighbors and they don't like it. The screening needs to be done properly.
So we're, I, maybe I'm wrong on this, but we're always determining by the box size. Do we determine the species and the, the height of the species? And if that's delineated very clearly, then, because sometimes you can get a smaller box, but it's a bigger plant. So by going just by the box size, it doesn't seem to fit, fit the purpose if the purpose is having it be a specific height by a certain time.
It just says what you can't plant.
There's, there's a sentence at the end of that minimum tree size that says larger trees may be required in the sole discretion of the town arborist, where it is necessary to meet the objectives of this chapter. You could simply say larger or smaller trees.
Great. That, that, that was my next question is, I, I, I don't want to prescribe it too much. I'd like to give some discretion to the town arborist. And, I mean, I, I don't know, Sally, if you want to weigh in on this or not.
So the reason why it came up that fifteen gallons wasn't working is because, like you said, in three to five years, if they pop in a fifteen gallon, the amount of years it takes for the fifteen gallon to reach a twenty-four or thirty-six, it takes some years. So in this case, I don't consider a fifteen gallon as a good choice. But ninety percent of sites don't screen until they need to finalize the building.
Right.
You're putting in a fifteen gallon, all of the neighbors will complain.
And do you think it would be a problem if we added the language that George suggested, which is that at the, at the town arborist's discretion, it could be larger or smaller?
I think that's fine. There are cases where I, I very seldom allow fifteen gallons currently, but there are some cases where they could show me that the fifteen gallon or, or burlapped tree is at, is a good height, and so I allow it. So that would continue to let me have that discretion. But it, but in most cases, I would follow the ordinance and not do that.
Great. That's good.
If, if we're considering that, then, then we need to add a little bit of additional language change. It should say, unless as otherwise provided herein, comma, all trees shall be at least thirty-six inch box because we're starting that paragraph and mandating a minimum tree size. And so we have to allow for language that says that there's a very unique exception that the arborist can allow smaller trees than the minimum tree size to occur.
So, we. So it sounds like we can make that change, but we shouldn't make any change to the, to the other issue about off-site planting. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve this ordinance with the changes that we just discussed.
I haven't taken public comment. Don't see any public comment, so. Those made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. All in favor?
Aye. As amended, correct?
Yes, yes, that was the motion. Okay, thank you. We are moving on to item fourteen, which is a public hearing regarding introduction and first reading of ordinance approving policy for the use and acquisition of military equipment as required by Assembly Bill four eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The police chief had a big PowerPoint for you, but I took control.
Oh, boy.
The city council last saw this item as part of an original underlying policy adopted in January of this year. This is the same policy in ordinance format, no changes, as required by the state. It's recommended that the council conduct a public hearing, introduce the ordinance for first reading, waive further reading. Staff is present to answer any questions the council may have.
So chief, do we only use the forty-four millimeter on certain people? It says here that you only use it to incapacitate vi, violet suspects.
Violet?
Violet.
Violet.
And so, you know, being a horned frog and loving purple, and, and I would think that you would shoot all different colored people with regards to whether they're wearing green or whether they're wearing a black hoodie or something like that. Could you, could you opine on this, please?
That's in the staff.
I noticed it when I.
Why what color they wear when we.
Well, that's what it says.
That was in the staff.
I think maybe you think it's violent. Maybe when I'm running away.
Or wearing purple.
Yeah, next time I wear my purple shirt.
Duck and cover, this is a bulletproof Diaz, isn't it?
Are there any questions from any members of the council?
But you know what, the city manager wouldn't know which.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve this with a typo change.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're moving on to item number fifteen.
Fifteen.
Which is to adopt attached resolutions, adopting the fiscal year operations capital budget, so on and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There are numerous parts to this item. It includes five distinct resolutions for adoption, addressing the budget, salaries and benefits, the GAN limit and the master fee schedule. It's a very nice document put together by Robert and the whole team with nice, wonderful cover photos of the new town center, as, as modeled by. It is recommended that the council conduct the public hearing, take any public comment and then adopt the resolutions by one motion with any amendments as noted. It is my understanding that the council would like to make minor modifications to the fee schedule in relation to park fees. So you can go through those one by one, or I can, I copy down the list, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to go through them as well. I'll go for it. Okay. So the recommended revisions on the park fees are to amend the main house Monday through Friday cost to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for residents and two hundred dollars for non-residents. The main house on Saturdays and Sundays amended to three hundred and fifty dollars for residents and four hundred and fifty dollars for non-residents. For rental of outdoor areas by the hour, a hundred and fifty dollars for resident, two hundred dollars for non-resident. The carriage house, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for resident and two hundred dollars for non-resident. The Jennings Pavilion on Friday day and Monday through Thursday, two hundred and fifty dollars for resident, four hundred for non-resident. The Jennings Pavilion Friday night and Saturday and Sunday, seven fifty for resident, one thousand for non-resident. Day use thirteen to twenty-five. They use thirteen to twenty-five, one hundred for resident, one fifty for non-resident. They use twenty-six to fifty, one seventy-five for resident and three hundred for non-resident. And the recommendation would be that these would be adopted this evening as part of the the budget. But that the park and rec committee take a look at them at their very next meeting. And then if there are any suggested amendments to that, that that be returned to the council for minor amendments there.
The the solar panel.
Yes, also eliminating the five hundred dollar solar panel fee permit.
So I saw your email earlier about this, but I don't think I realized that. To be honest with you, I wasn't quite sure what's going on. Who who suggested these changes?
Bill and I had a discussion during office hours about it. Bill initiated that we should increase the difference between non-resident and resident since residents are already paying for much of this with their own ta- with their taxes.
I'm a hundred percent in favor. I just didn't, I didn't know the background.
That was the background. Any questions about the budget or comments about the budget? Can I get a motion? Public comment. Oh, public comment, sorry.
I just have a comment about the budget. Okay, just real quickly. I mean, I really have to say, I think that staff and Robert and everybody have done a really amazing job. And I think that this is something that we should be very proud of and you guys should be very proud of, and I wanted to just extend my gratitude. I can't tell you how good it is that how you bring us along every step of the way, the last four months and, you know, kind of get us familiar with it to come to this time and and we can approve it.
Great. I'd like an autographed copy.
You what?
I'd like an autographed copy.
That's available.
I'd like to move that we approve the the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget with the amended park and solar panel fees that we just discussed.
And all associated.
Excuse me?
And all associated resolutions?
Yes. Yes.
Second.
All all five.
Okay, all in favor? unanimously approved. We're moving on to item sixteen, which is consideration of an appointment to various committees and planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item involves the appointments to various committees and the commission for the audit, finance, park and rec and planning commission. There are an equal number of applicants to their respective seats. These three can all be made in one motion as recommended in the staff report. There are no applicants for the vacancies on bike ped and transportation. We'll continue to advertise for those. The council must make independent appointments and select specific terms for the environmental programs and the rail committees. And the city clerk is present this evening to assist the council in moving through each appointment as you do so.
I have a question, so and a comment, I guess. The first question is, you you said that there's an equal number of applicants for each vacancy?
Only on the audit, finance, park and rec and planning. Planning is an incumbent who's volunteered to run again only because there's been no other applicants. He has turned out.
And and there are less applicants than openings for environmental programs and park and rec?
There are independent terms. There's independent terms for environmental programs that you have to specify. And then with rail committee, there's more applicants than vacancies. And that's where you, Mr. Mary, wanted to talk about the future of the rail committee.
So actually, we we have no applicants for two openings on bike ped. We have two applicants for three openings on environmental programs, and if I read it right, we have two applicants for three openings on park and rec.
For park and rec, we have two applicants for three openings. That's correct. One of the applicants is an incumbent regular seat and the other applicant is also an incumbent for the foundation seat. So that would leave us with one vacancy.
From the foundation.
Okay, so on the rail committee, this was the comment. We have two applicants for one opening. We can decide on that, keep the rail committee as it is. Given that the train station has closed. The rail committee's focus really is on solely high-speed rail. Which, who knows what's happening with high-speed rail, but it's an issue that we all care about. And I think the rail committee has served a really important job for us as a council for many, many years. I also think that we could let, we could let both those applicants join the rail committee and let the rail committee kind of go the way that the art committee has and, you know, friends of the library are where their town organizations, but they're not advisory committees to the council. And that would, there'd be some cost savings to the town for that. And then the rail committee wouldn't be limited in terms of their applicants based on our procedures and.
Numbers and things like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hasn't commented on, so my proposal would be to not make the decision on the rail committee tonight, but to refer that to the rail committee for them to discuss and to then to bring it back to us in July or September.
They would be able to meet in city premises if they wanted to hold their.
Yeah, just just like the other committees.
Just we don't have to have a staff member there all the time.
No staff member, no Brown Act.
Brown Act.
No agenda posting.
Free to say whatever you want, whenever you want, to whomever you want.
Let me ask a question. Would they be able to still come back to our meetings and give public comment?
We can take their comment.
So it doesn't change any, anything on that front?
No, they can give us advice just like they do now.
Yeah.
It's just that their charter is kind of changed because the trains no longer net stopping in Atherton.
The tree committee is probably a really good example. They are not a town committee. They're town adjacent. They're used, that we have them as a designated group so they can use town facilities. The town arborist often attends those meetings and participates on an as-needed basis with them, and the same could be done with the rail committee.
I think that's a good idea. I think that's very good, Mayor. Nice job.
Okay. I've got some recommendations. We have a decision to make on the environmental programs committee. Over the applicants, and I would like to suggest that Kenneth take the six thirty twenty-four position and the other applicant, I think Anne, take Amy, sorry, take the twenty twenty-three position and then, of course, they can both rerun, obviously. When that position, when the year is up.
Wait, as I understand it, there's three openings. One
Yeah, but.
Is in a term expiring twenty twenty-three, one expiring twenty twenty-four, one expiring twenty twenty-six.
Right, so two of them are the result of midterm resignations, and then the last one you mentioned is the full four-year term.
Yeah, I'm looking at the the sheet that's attachment to, and it says there are two vacant positions that are red that we're looking to add new people to. And one that is vacant that we need to put a name in is twenty twenty-three, and the other one is twenty twenty-four.
Right, so you're suggesting that
He seems eminently qualified. The other applicant just seems also very, very qualified. You know, I would, I would side with, you know, doing that weighing.
But but your chart is showing only two vacancies.
Two vacancies, well, because Emily Khan, I assume, is rerunning.
No.
No, she's not.
No, she's not.
That's why she's read it out.
So there's three, so there's one open space.
No.
Two applicants for three openings.
So I'd say Ken Frederick should have the twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-four.
We only have two here, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-three.
Emily is not running, so there's an, there's an.
Twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
Okay, fine. That that wasn't clear on the table. So yes, I agree with you. Twenty twenty-six and then twenty twenty-four. And then the open one would be expiring in twenty twenty-three.
And so you you want Kenneth to be the twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
And then Amy for twenty twenty-four.
Correct. That's my recommendation.
Understood.
I think that's good. And do we have that kind of a decision on any other committee?
No.
Looks like we do. One for one.
Deferring the rail committee decision?
Well, I I'm recommending that we decide to refer to the rail committee.
No, I understand that.
Yes, we're deferring the rail committee decision until July or September after they've had a.
But the others we can pass with a single.
The other ones we can pass in a single motion.
Just, Mayor, just the next rail committee meeting isn't until August.
The next rail committee is August?
Is gonna be, we just had a meeting last night, so it'll be August, the week after.
We're closed August.
But they can meet.
The 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 committee meets on the even months. And so they'll be meeting in August. Normally it would be the second, but that's national night out, so they'll be meeting on the ninth.
Great.
But.
So let's defer the decision.
It would be September.
Yep.
The question I have is for the vacancy. We have our vice chair is the incumbent that applied for reappointment. And so whether or not you're choosing to make any appointments while that conversation happens is really my question.
I think we were deferring it, right?
He was in there and with the one motion, we can.
Well, I think what he's saying is that his term expires in June. So if his term expires in June, it makes him ineligible to participate in the August meeting. Is that what you're saying?
As a member.
Well, I think they should have John.
So you, in theory, you can appoint John and then.
Appoint him for two months.
Well, we can appoint him to the committee and then.
Yeah.
Right.
Let them decide.
Good, okay. Nice, nice.
So can I get a motion? Captures these two parts.
Okay. I agree that we should appoint the the applicant to the rail committee and and have the rail committee come back and opine on their position about becoming just a ad hoc committee in the September meeting and also make the two appointments on on the environmental programs committee as we discussed with Kenneth taking the twenty twenty-six and Amy taking the twenty twenty-four seat.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And do I have any public comment on this issue?
You guys okay with that?
I don't see any public comment. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is item seventeen.
Can I just get clarification? So are we also pointing all the park and rec applicants, planning, audit and finance, all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that 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 motion approved everyone that has applied for an open position with what Bill said regarding environmental programs committee and the rail.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, item eighteen, which is the city manager performance evaluation and approval amendment to the city manager employment contract.
I'll take that one. Thank you, Mayor DeGolia. Following the reporting out of closed session. The city council evaluated the city manager and unanimously decided that the city manager had been performing in an excellent manner. They were particularly pleased with his assistance with the completion of the civic center amongst other things. As a result, the city council is suggesting a five, or excuse me, a fifteen thousand dollar bonus and a five percent raise to his annual salary. His annual salary is two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. So with the five percent increase, the new amount would be two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Eight hu- two thousand, two hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-four and fifteen cents. The effective date of this change would be July first, two thousand and twenty-two, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
There's also an amendment to the language of the city attorney about eliminating the clause to reflect percentage increases granted to all other management employees within the language of the amendment.
Right.
Correct.
Questions?
No.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Public comment first.
A public comment? I don't see any public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving to item nineteen. City attorney performance evaluation, approval of amendment to legal services agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take this one. We just kind of flipped back and forth on this. And I did notice that I just wrote a staff report to myself, which is very interesting. So the city council met in closed session and authorized an amendment to the legal services agreement with the city attorney for chronic Moskowitz, Tiedemann and Gerard to increase the retainer amount from fifteen thousand dollars per month to 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 seventeen thousand dollars a month and to perform an annual evaluation of the city attorney's services to consider other adjustments as needed at those times. That increase would be effective July one, twenty twenty-two.
I'd make a motion to approve the increase of for the city attorney to seventeen thousand.
Second from Diana, motion, motion from Elizabeth. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
And that that really was it, huh? I wanted to applaud our city manager for getting our city town.